Mr. Parker, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Daniels. Ms. Green. Mr. Mattson.
Here.
Mr. Majors.
Here.
Ms. Rawls.
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Present.
And Ms. Bowers.
Present, thank you. Please note for the record that Vice President Green is excused this evening, and Councilwoman Daniels will be joining us by phone. We'll begin our committee business, but just some housekeeping notes. I have asked our directors, Commissioner, Chief Enterline, to be present this evening to share some quarterly reports. The majority of the reporting you will hear this evening will be from the second quarter. The end of the third quarter is the end of this month. So perhaps we'll have a reporting for the third and fourth quarter before the budget if we can. Public Works, you will hear quarters one through three, because we did not have a previous quarterly reporting from them. Okay, so we're going to get started. We will begin our committee business this evening with the Public Safety Committee. Chair Rodriguez, I will defer the floor to you.
Thank you, President Bowers. Commissioner Carter and team, thank you for being here this evening. You'll be representing the administration. Would you like to give an overhaul of the report? Absolutely. Captain, could you talk into the mic for us, please?
Absolutely, sir.
Thank you.
Can everybody hear me?
Absolutely.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for this opportunity, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, like our commissioner said, my name's Terry Whelan. I'm the captain of our Criminal Investigation Division here at the Harrisburg Police. I was told I have about 10 minutes. Correct me if I'm wrong, with about a five.
That's correct. I've asked 10 minutes for a presentation of the report and for five minutes for question and answers, just because we have so many to keep things moving.
Okay.
Thank you.
I could talk for three or four hours, so watch myself. Either way, I'll be brief, but effective, hopefully. And if there's any questions, then you'll ask me at the end.
Thank you.
You guys all have the document that was prepared in front of you?
Yes.
What that is, is a rundown. It kind of looks familiar to when Deputy Chief Sorensen was up here in April. I essentially, we essentially went through, changed the numbers, updated the language, and added some other stuff to it that will get us towards the April, May, and June timeframe of 2022. You can see there, as far as personnel-wise, each of these different bullet points are broken down. Personnel-wise, we currently stand at 136. We're up 16 from when Deputy Chief Sorensen was here a couple of months ago talking to you, which is a very good thing. That includes six command staff members, 21 supervisors, 87 patrol officers, 18 detectives, four forensic investigators. And we also have 15 ASME employees that are assigned to our bureau. We do have some vacancies. For the sake of time, you can look at those over on the right-hand side. If there's any questions about it, please feel free to ask. We are currently in another hiring phase. That has not stopped for the last, it seems about two years. It's a living, breathing thing that we deal with. Whenever Deputy Chief Sorensen's in town, we talk about it almost seems daily. The application period ended for April 2022. Physical fitness testing was 23 April. If you remember the last time he, Deputy Chief, was talking about the test was like that Saturday, Saturday and Sunday. I watched the video, sorry.
Yep.
But anyway, 63 applicants were scheduled to take the test. The written exam was on 24 April. The dilemma that the bureau had with Hack where we talked about, they decided to change their academy start date at the last minute. We were still able to start five cadets up there. They're up there currently, which is a good thing. We were able to conquer the challenge of the next set of hiring that we had. And we had five cadets started here at Temple University Ambler Campus on September 12th. They're there, hopefully they're doing, it's 5:30. Hopefully they're doing homework or studying or something. And they're over there doing well. They've been there for, it's week two for them. They had five, we had five officers who accepted conditional officers of employment. The Hack MOPAC Police Academy began 31 May. That was in the meantime, those cadets.
Excuse me, can you move the microphone closer?
Sure.
Thank you.
I've never, never been accused of being too quiet. That's a, that's a first for me, okay? Or was I? Oh, they, they're, those officers are up there currently. Once it started in 31 May, they're scheduled to graduate in December of this year. There were five officers that had previously graduated from the Hack Academy that were already up there earlier this year. They completed their in-house training, which is six weeks. They started their field training on 18 April, and that program goes for 12 weeks. They ended on 10 July with field training, and they're currently working the street as we speak. Four officers out of that class unfortunately left for other police departments. Now, I will note that we haven't had that happen. Well, second quarter of the year's come and gone. We didn't, we didn't have anybody leave in the second quarter of 2022. So that's a good thing as well.
Absolutely.
Breakdown of the cadets that we have currently, and I center on the cadets a lot because that's our lifeblood. That's essentially what's feeding our bureau for the next several years. And we have to feed from, from the ground up. Four of them are currently at Hack. That's from the October hiring process. Two of them are at Hack. That's from the April hiring process. They got hired and we swore them in as well. Five are at Temple, I talked about that. And one is finishing his field training this week. So he'll be out on the street, hopefully if everything goes well towards the end of this week. Getting into the overview here, we found out recently that the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency was offering up a lot of money, a lot of funding towards grants that every agency, law enforcement agency in the Commonwealth stands to gain by, stands to get. We have the number, it's two different grants. Each of them valued at $5 million apiece. The gun violence intervention and prosecution grants up to $5 million available to our city. That's to support personnel costs, technology systems to support firearm violence reduction initiatives, and also other efforts to aid in investigation, arrest, and prosecution of crimes involving firearms. That's through the Gun Violence Intervention and Prosecution Grant. And there's also what's called a local law enforcement grant program, which again is up to $5 million just for the city alone. That's for technology and IT improvements, non-sworn personnel costs, policy development, and evidence-based practices and training. There's also an officer wellness piece on that one as well. And again, we just have to get all that information together. The City Law Bureau is drafting a resolution to be brought before you sometime here in the, in the near future. The deadline for that grant, it was, it was a tight window. It's actually October 13th of this year, so we don't have a whole lot of time. And we recognize that, and we're working through that as we speak. I know, Mr. Rodriguez, you brought something about the ShotSpotter technology at the last meeting. I think you said something about that.
Or any gunshot detection.
Yes.
Possibly, yes.
That, something like that, when I mentioned technology, just to give an example.
Yep, absolutely.
Obviously, things like that cost money.
Yep.
That's the technology that I'm talking about here. Among other things, there's all kinds of stuff, but that's one of them.
Awesome.
We had Training Day Two. I know Deputy Chief Sorensen had talked about this before. That was completed. Everything went very well. We talked about a MOPAC mandated defensive tactics module that we went. We have our own onboard instructors, instructors, as well as de-escalation through a Force Science Institute. We have several instructors, myself included, other taught to teach de-escalation. That's, it teaches the strategic decision-making process, calculating risk assessment, S and G, opportunistic tactics, and what's called discretionary time. That was a tactic that I'd never heard of before I went to the Force Science School. I'm a true believer, and, and these methods that we teach during that class, I think they're working. And I can, I can see a difference, and they are working. Scenarios, our in-house training for police recruits is a very personnel-heavy thing. We try to deliver a good product because we're getting our, our officers at the ground level. So that's something that we try to teach them right from the ground up. That's everything from how to talk to people, how to testify in court, and then have to deal with the physical aspects of, of police work as well. We also completed Dolphin County Mobile Field Force Training. That was in May of this year. We have several members of our bureau that are part of that county-wide team. It's a good endeavor. The vehicle update here, I know they talked before about our transport van issue that we had. One of them got totaled by a DUI driver and stuff like that. We did through our business administrator, administrator, rather, Mr. Dan Hartman, the mayor's office, and our, and our own commissioner here. They managed to come up with a van for nothing. They essentially took equipment out of the van that was totaled, that they could salvage, and they're going to reinstall it into this new van that they got. So it essentially saved about $55,000 doing that. So that, that's a good thing. We started, we're still going through, getting quotes for upgraded vehicles and things like that. There was several supply chain issues that we had to deal with, and that's a nationwide thing. Imagine trying to find siren boxes and light bars and things like that for police vehicles. It's just, it wasn't an easy process. We're working through that, so we have that going for us. Speaking in terms of gun violence, unfortunately, we had two homicide incidents during the second quarter this year with three victims. We had one double homicide during the second quarter of 2022. We are at a 33% difference. We're down from where we were second quarter of 2021. We had two then, now we have three second quarter. What are we doing about it? We have saturation details where we bring a bunch of officers out on overtime details. Dolphin County CRT participated in several of these as well for a uniform presence within the city, working alongside our, our city officers. Pennsylvania State Police comes out regularly with the Street Crimes Unit. They have a unit that specifically, they gel together, they come out and they work together. And also other state agencies such as the Attorney General's Office and PA State Parole. Now that we have a very robust relation with those agencies. And they've, they've jumped on board and they've been all-in to help us out with the issues that we're having towards the beginning part of this year. We also have the GVI initiative, which I'll talk about here in a little bit. Those things seem to be working. Unfortunately, it does cost a lot of money to field that stuff, but they do seem to be working. So, so I have that to offer up. I have on there about the Community Services Division. I have a separate report. I was, I was told that I'll be delivering that for Captain Hooper. So I'll talk about that at a later time. Dolphin County Co-responders, again, robust program county-wide, started about two years ago, maybe three years ago. Dolphin County, is that my time? Oh, man, I'm only about halfway done. Should I keep going, or?
Madam President, do you have a recommendation?
Since, I guess since you'll be delivering two reports, you can keep going.
Thank you. I'll ad lib this.
Keep it concise.
Yeah, I will, absolutely. Dolphin County Co-responders, county-wide, there's seven. We have three onboard here at the City Police. They ride right along with our officers and everything. That program seems to be working as well. We currently have 58 officers who are crisis intervention trained by Dr. Ashley Yinger. She was kind of the poster child for this, this whole project and everything else. Very nice lady. And, and it's a robust program that again seems to be working. We're getting our officers right out on the street, and they're able to deal with some of these situations as they come up firsthand. Go through the Uniform Patrol Numbers there. Of note, I have down here total incidents in our report-writing system. The CODI system is 7,046 for second quarter alone, okay? That's a lot. It's actually down from last year, second quarter, you can imagine that. But that, that covers everything from assaults to burglaries, domestic assaults, narcotics, found property and stuff like that. Now, when I say the word incidents, that's everything. Parking complaints to noise complaints to shots being fired, thefts and all that, okay? So 7,000 total. We do have a Street Crimes Unit here, one supervisor, two officers. Out of all of the 91 weapons that our Uniform Patrol Division took off the street, 22 of those were seized by Street Crimes alone. I think that's a pretty big number for essentially three officers plus probation and parole assets onboard. You can read the totals there that they had at your leisure. Criminal Investigation Division, they assigned 44 cases second quarter alone in the Adult Offender Section. 104 year-to-date, that's five detectives fielding those investigations. Juvenile Offender Section, they had 132 cases second quarter of this year alone. 234 cases year-to-date, second quarter, that's six detectives doing that. You can read the vice unit numbers. They're pretty big. They're actually going to go up when we, when we talk about third quarter numbers as well. I mean, that's obvious, but they, they had a, an interesting third quarter. Those, those numbers are going to go up dramatically when we talk about that. All those numbers generated by four detectives. Forensic Section in CID processed 375 crime scenes. That's if somebody was out there and they take a picture of a broken window on a car or something like that, all the way up to and including, you know, homicide scene or something like that, okay? 375 of those among four investigators. One of the important things here, we started administering, teaching and administering Narcan out on the street, our officers. Pretty good numbers here. Second quarter, they had 11 overdose cases with 13 doses of Narcan administered. 21 overdose cases with 26 doses of Narcan administered year-to-date, second quarter. Unfortunately, there was one that was unsuccessful, so we only had one unsuccessful usage, meaning that the person passed during, that's year-to-date actually, up to and including second quarter. So Narcan seems to be helping a lot of the issues that we've had with overdoses. I know there was a mandate that came out about the Internal Affairs, the Personnel Complaints and stuff like that. That's the last, that's page number six here. You could see total number of citizens' complaints, second quarter equals seven. Two of those were from the same individual filing twice, which is something that happens on occasion, obviously. The demographic on the complainants, you had four, four black males complaining. You had one Hispanic female, one black female, and one unknown female made these complaints. The officer demographics, two white males, one white female, and three black males. One complaint was against both Harrisburg Police and Dolphin County Emergency Management, the dispatch center, and not, not an individual officer. And as far as the findings, they had six unfounded and one is still ongoing as, as of second quarter. You want me to, ma'am, would you like me to answer questions on that? Or would you like me to go right into the community?
I think, I think we can go down, see just if anyone on council has any questions, and then you can go right in for Captain Hooper.
Thank you.
Absolutely. I'll start to my far right hand, Councilwoman Rawls.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rodriguez, and good evening to you both. Thanks for coming tonight. I don't have any questions. It was very detailed.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Thank you for that. Councilwoman Mattson?
Yeah, one question I have, I know it may be difficult for you to answer, but I know in a lot of other cities that are larger, we've seen a lot of homicides, but it seems comparatively we don't have as many. I get it because we're smaller, but I guess per capita-wise, it even seems like a smaller amount. Do you have any thoughts as to why we saw, we're seeing such an uptick in other places, but then maybe less here?
Why did he have to say that? I have, I have my own philosophies on that. You know, a lot of things at the beginning of this year, unfortunately, you would have never been able to say that.
Right.
The whole ship was going off the hook or off the rails at that point. Fortunately, that's changed. I think we put a lot of things in place in the form of these details and things like that that we've been fielding, throwing a decent amount of money and assets at the problem. I'm going to say that fortunately, that stuff has started to slow down as we go around. I think it also has to do with, you know, the fact that our, our officers are out there on the street and, and dealing with people. We've got a whole bunch of things that have come into play since 2020, which 2020 was an interesting year at best, I'll say that. You know, we've had the de-escalation training. We've had the, the co-responders going out there and everything. We can't be everywhere. We've talked about that before, and some of the things that, that have happened, happened because we just can't be everywhere, sort of assigning an officer to everybody's house, which is obviously not feasible. But I, I think that, you know, it has to do with the way, a lot with the way that our officers interact with the public, that relation that they have. Not everybody likes the police, I can understand that. But we, you know, we do have positive interactions, and we also have our Community Services Division, which, you know, it's, it's a lot better than it was a year ago. They have people over there that are out there trying to do the best they can by this town, and, and I got to respect that. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yeah, because.
If I can add something to it, sir. The holistic approach that the city has taken, it's not only the police, it's the CSAs. It's also City Council because of engagement that City Council does. It's the mayor's office. You know, it's a combination of everything and everybody. You know, we try to listen and understand people's needs. You know, we try to get out there, we try to like help them. It's Public Works, it's just the whole approach that the city has right now. Captain Whelan, it's true, you know, we have no crystal ball. We can't tell, you know, when a homicide is going to happen. But the resources, you know, that we try to put out there and the help that we try to help people with, you know, it's really helping us out here, you know? So, you know, true, Harrisburg isn't as big as Philadelphia. We don't have that overcrowding problem. You know, we don't have the necessary drug problem, you know, that they have. But the holistic, that approach that Mayor Williams, City Council, and by all says, take it. I think that is a big change. That's why things are the way that they are right now.
Thank you for that. And let's hope that we continue to not have as many homicides as other places, if any.
I just hope that you didn't jinx us, sir.
Right, yeah.
Thank you for that. Madam President Bowers?
Thank you, Chair Rodriguez. Thank you very much for your presentation, Part One. I do have a question. I noticed that the city ordinance violations have increased slightly during the second quarter. I was curious to know, is there a particular ordinance that we're seeing that's being violated? Or are you aware?
I would say the noise ordinance.
I figured that's what it was, but I didn't want to assume.
This is totally, that's a guesstimate.
Okay.
I, I would say that, that, as well as some of the, some of the codes violations that we have.
Okay.
Because they fall up under, obviously, Bureau of Police as well. That would, that would probably have something to do with it.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you for that. Councilwoman Majors?
Yes. Well, first of all, thank you for the report. It is very thorough. Just want to know, I guess, one question, so, well, two questions. The report, I don't know if this is for Neil or, or the Commissioner, posted to the website? Is this a public document that can be? Okay. Okay, yeah, it looks like a lot of the PII is removed from it, so potentially. So I just wanted to see if that can be publicly made available and on the website. And then two, with respect to the two grants from PCCD, is there any additional detail? I know we can get up to $5 million. Do we know exactly what we're looking to make investments on yet? You know, as part of the grant, or is it just all that, we're just open to all the fields that are eligible under that, under those grant programs?
There's, thank you for the question, sir. There, there are some pretty stringent criteria. Like I learned a new term through that whole thing, it's supplant. You can't supplant, you have to supplement.
Right.
Essentially, if we budgeted money for something, we can't replace that with that grant money. We have to supplement, so we have to expand. So that, that's one of the big things, which is kind of makes everybody go, oh, man, come on. But with that being said, there's, there's several different things to answer the question on. Do we have any idea where we're going, what we're going to go for? Like how much money for what particular product? We are working through that. I've been working through that ever since they announced this thing. I think they put a tight window on it for some reason or another. I don't know exactly what that is, but I can only imagine it's budget season, and then, you know, all of a sudden, we have a big, big-money grant coming at us. So we are, we are working through that. We're trying to stay ahead of the game, so to speak, with it. And that totally, it kind of blindsided a lot of people with like, wow, you're going to spend that kind of money. And that's, that's Commonwealth, across the Commonwealth. That's not just the city, which is, that's a good thing.
Yeah.
Does that answer your question, sir?
No, but I guess, well, I guess what we meant when we get the resolution, that should have some of the information. And I don't know, Neil, do we expect to get that in advance of the deadline, or? Okay, all right. Thank you, no further questions. Yeah, yeah, I said, that's my biggest, I just don't want to jeopardize anything. You know, as, as council, having an opportunity to take a look at it prior to it being submitted would be appreciated, appreciated. So no further questions at this time. Thank you for the report.
Thank you, Councilwoman Majors. Will Councilwoman Daniels be joining us? All right, thank you for that. And just for the sake of time, I can hold mine to the end. Thank you for the description and precision so far with the metrics. And if you'd like to continue, feel free. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, what I'm going to get into now here is what Captain Hooper sent me. As far, can you hear me now?
Absolutely.
Okay. As far as our Community Service Division within our Bureau of Police here. You have this in front of you, I assume? You do? Okay, yes. I'm sorry, ma'am. Okay. It's their quarterly port, quarterly report, rather. It consists of five full-time members in the form of CSAs, Community Service Aides. They're in the final stages of bringing a number six onboard, which means they're doing a background investigation, and that individual should be able to start as soon, actually. Two CSAs left for further employment outside the city, and one was hired by an internal transfer, which was kind of a good thing. Second quarter of 2022, the CSE unit handled approximately 363 calls for service. I'm not going to go through unless you want me to. You can see what kind of stuff that they're handling. With patrols, parking problems. One of the big things that I hear on the radio quite a bit is non-reportable accidents. You know, they get out there to supplement patrol and basically take care of the things like that, that could be handled at their level. It took about 265 hours to notate the proceeding into our CODI report management system. Everybody that we have contact with, we try to put it in our report system in one way, shape, or form, names, data burst, phone numbers. In the event that they would be getting involved in something else at a later time, at least we have some kind of contact information to get ahold of them with. There are several different meetings and stuff like that that they've attended, meetings and events, namely Jewish Community Center. They go up there for a monthly safety meeting. I see Councilwoman Rawls here was involved in a fraternity team summit with, with some of our CSAs at Camp Curtin Academy. I know I saw them, it was third quarter, but I know I saw them up at National Night Out uptown. But there's a whole bunch of different things on there that they've been involved with. They do safety checks and things like that up at our schools is a big one for dismissal time and, and, you know, to get the kids out of school and all that stuff in a safe manner. So if you guys have any questions on any of the meetings or events, I guess we can get them in a minute here. But I could talk also on this group violence initiative, the grant that we had there. I think that Councilwoman Majors had, I think it was you that referenced this before, something about the GVI grant? I thought it was you, but, either way, they've held 22 collaborative meetings with stakeholders. City Council, you guys approved ratification of the grant and National Network for Safe Communities consultant contract. I was personally involved in three different conference calls with them. We're having our first problem analysis meeting tomorrow afternoon. About a three, three-hour process. We're going to do several of those to start to identify our problem. We're going to do several of those to start to identify our problems that we have here. I mean, that may seem like a simple thing, but i- it's kind of an involved process. And after, uh, doing a little bit of research and hearing what, um, this, this company has to say, I'm, I'm getting towards, uh, respecting their, their opinions on certain things. So that, that's kind of good. I'm really kind of looking forward to tomorrow to see how that goes. It's been presented to our police command staff on several different occasions. And, uh, that's essentially it. If there's any, any questions?
Absolutely. Thank you for that. Um, I can start to my immediate right, Councilwoman Daniels. Thank you. Councilman Majors?
Thank you. So this is from the second quarters and talk about the position, the GVI project manager position being posted. Have we had any applications yet or are we, and have we, are we, I guess, filtering them through or have any interviews been done? So I know we want to, you know, really get this project going.
We interviewed, uh, several, uh, people for that job, councilmen. And, uh, we were in the process of hiring a female for that job. And, uh, at the 12th hour, um, she decided to go with the school district and, uh, take the job on us. Now we have somebody else that we're looking at and they should be interviewed, um, this week, hopefully by Thursday.
Okay, and then I guess my next question, uh, can you just discuss briefly some of the stakeholder groups that you've had? Stakeholders that you had conversations with? You know, we, um, so I'm looking forward to, you know, any larger meetings, any different, you know, public meetings that can happen as they're looking to gather the information. So just discuss some of the stakeholders you have just had contact with thus far.
Sure. We've had, I, I haven't personally been involved in, in those conversations, but I know for a fact, uh, Dolphin County, uh, probation and parole's been involved, uh, as well as the state. Because they have, you know, a large amount of clientele, unfortunately, they, they go through that whole thing. Those are the main ones. Uh, the Dolphin County District Attorney's Office as well are just three, off the top of my head, that, uh, have been contacted. And they're going to be part of that, that meeting tomorrow, from, from the best of my understanding.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions right now.
Thank you. Madam President, uh, any questions?
Uh, thank you. Maybe just a comment, some comments. Thank you for sharing on, and Captain Hooper's absent. Um, I think it's always nice to hear, uh, what the CSAs are doing because I think there's still some question mark of what their roles are versus police officers. So thank you for sharing some of the things that, um, the CSAs have been doing. It's nice to see that, um, you've added a CSA. So that's, I'm glad to hear that. In reference to the GVI grant too, um, I want to follow up on the stakeholder question. And you may not be able to answer it, and that's okay. But are there, will there be any community organizations participating in any of these, um, problem analysis meetings in the future perhaps?
Yes, I believe that we reached out to some churches and to some other people, community people here. Um, I know that there's a mental health aspect to it. Hasbro Hospital and some, some other places like that. So yes, we're reaching out to everyone.
Okay. I just didn't want us to lose momentum. I think I said it before, from the town halls, because it seemed like there were so many nonprofits that were almost duplicating efforts, but were really excited to get involved. So I just, I wanted to make sure we maintain that energy and interest. So I'm glad to hear that, um, the outreach has taken place and I'm hopeful that, uh, those organizations will participate.
Yes, Madam President. And during the third quarter, we can give you a list of all of the organizations.
Okay. Okay, that sounds good. Thank you. I don't have anything else.
Thank you for that. Councilman Mattson?
Uh, no questions for me, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Councilwoman Rawls?
Uh, thank you, Councilman Rodriguez. Um, I had a question about the school checks and dismissal. I know that you're going, it says on here Camp Curtain in Rowland. I've also, um, seen a few, um, CSAs at Melrose. Not a few, but I, I saw one. Is this gonna, do you have a regular schedule? Um, are they going every day? Is this going to continue? Have you partnered with the district or is this just a once in a while, um, school check and dismissal arrival that you're doing?
We have partnered with the district, ma'am. There's a lot of things going on. We just met with, um, Mr. Truman, the receiver.
Truman, oh.
Truman, Truman.
That's all right. Truman, Truman.
There you go. Thank you. And, uh, you know, this is going to be on a regular basis. Um, um, the CSAs, they just completed a child clearance line. They're going to be inside the schools, um, going to classes, answering questions and different things like that. We're also, um, um, there is a big homeless population in our school district. We're working on that with the school district. There is also a, um, a large contingent of, um, kids who don't go to school, truancy and stuff like that. And so we're partnering with the school district for that and the CSAs will be doing most of that. Also, um, we're partnering with the school district to, um, have a laundromat or someplace for kids, like wash their clothes. Mayor, the mayor, Mayor Williams, she's taking lead on that. And, you know, we're looking at locations now. So like, there's a lot of things that we're doing with the school district and through the CSAs.
Good, thank you. I'm glad to hear that because I think that was one of the big pieces was the partnership. Like you say, the holistic approach and everybody being included. Um, I think that's really going to help, um, you know, some of the things that are going in the city, especially, um, with the school district. There's a lot of bullying going on and dismissal and arrival can be quite hectic. So seeing the partnership all around, even with the homeless population in schools and truancy is great. So thank you. And that's, I don't have any more questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And, um, I guess I just wanted to know, as the CSAs are in the schools engaging with the students, are they getting any kind of intervention or prevention training to learn how to deal with in-school crisis?
They are getting training, sir. Um, I cannot tell you all the training that they're getting. Captain Hooper, you have to tell you that. But I know that they're dealing with the school district for training and they're dealing with other agencies, uh, for training to learn how to deal with our students.
Awesome. Is there a way you can send that information so we can just look into this? Thank you. Awesome.
Excuse me, Commissioner, could you please speak into the microphone when talking? Thank you.
No further questions from council? All right, uh, that will conclude our public safety quarterly reports. Thank you, gentlemen, for being with us this evening. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, we do have, um, Director Montgomery, uh, if you would like to come up with your quarterly report. And we also have, yeah. Chief, I don't know if you wanted to come up as well? Thank you, Director Montgomery, for joining us.
Hi, thank you. Okay, so, excuse me. Uh, year-to-date for the revenue, we are, uh, 1,114,352. It is short compared to last year of approximately 277,000. But any day now, we're about to deposit, uh, a very large check for the Hershey School. That has been approved, the plans for that, and that will almost make up for that difference. We continue to deal with Governor Square. Uh, the Code Department continues to address complaints and violations there. And last week, Code Officer Mike Cobble walked around the complex with two employees from Governor Square, addressing the issues and violations there. As far as illegally parked cars, the Code Department continues to address them whenever parked on parcels. And we have asked legal about having an ordinance for instant citations to better address illegally parked vehicles, boats or campers on the parcels. There has been an increase in rental fee payments for 2022. An increase of almost $74,000. We account this in part to taking one area out of five areas and going from parcel to parcel, finding over 300 new rental properties that were not registered. Also, we, uh, IT has been sending us, every Monday, they receive from Dolphin County, any new owners. And they are sending us that now this year, uh, any new ownerships. So if they are not living at that property, we send them notice to, uh, also apply for the rental fees. Linden Terrace, the high-rise apartment building recently picked up the plans and so the rehab should be starting there very soon. This building has 125 units. That's the one that sits on 1,200 block of North Front, right by Verbeck, Front and Verbeck. That's being completely rehabbed. The Hershey School, early child learning, the plans have been approved. I think all but the playground for that, there's a couple of things that have to be addressed for that yet. And also we need some more information on the contractor. This will be a two-story, 50,000-square-foot building with parking and a playground. Harrisburg University is still on track to complete the construction of the 11-story building before the new year. And also the library is still renovating their building on Walnut Street. So that's my summary.
All right.
Any questions?
Um, yes, absolutely. What, uh, in your office, what would prioritize a demo in the city?
If it's collapsing, we like to, of course, take those down. How long it's been there? If it's, uh, attached to another building? If someone's living in that building? And if we continue to get complaints, say, about a, a certain property that it's affecting their building, that would be high on the list. That would be one I'd want to take down.
Would it be, uh, a monetar, a monetarily, um, would it be prioritized according to funds in your department or?
Well, right now, I'm, I'm, I'm running out of funds.
Right.
So yes, I mean, that, that comes into play also. For each party wall, there's a certain cost. So if it's attached with two party walls, that will cost more. So depending on the amount of money that's available, um, yeah, that would come into play, that decision.
When you look into your budget in the early year, um, how do you determine which ones really have to go? Which ones can kind of wait a bit?
The ones that are collapsing is the ones that I would pick.
Okay. Are buil, buildings that are condemned? Would they be prioritized even if residents are living in them? Or how would you target those buildings?
If a building's condemned and someone's living in there, I wouldn't look to take that down. And, and I would imagine that's not collapsing. Basically, the ones that I'm taking down right now, they, they are collapsing, either internally or you can see externally.
I've seen, I've seen a few that are on its way to go and there's still residents living in those. I can bring those to your attention as well.
Yeah. For the ones that are living in a condemned property, I mean, we do come across that. That is unusual. Um, they, these may be people that are buying the property, uh, and not knowing that it's condemned.
No, ma'am, these are, uh, low-income families that pretty much are being, taking advantage of uptown. Um, I've been visiting them for quite a while, a few weeks now. And, uh, one family in particular, we're assisting. That's her actual situation right now. So any advice or guidance you can give towards that would help, but it is happening throughout our city.
So are you saying that the property is condemned, someone's living in there and that we are taking that property down?
Oh, I'm not saying anything. I'm just saying I know of condemned homes where there's families still living in them. And how would you prioritize that on, you know, your just day-to-day operations?
So for something like that, we would, um, if it's in danger of collapsing, yes, then we would let them know that they should get out.
And that would determine on the exterior infrastructure or interior?
On the exterior. If we were inside and saw structural issues, say, through a rental property, or we've had situations where someone has bought a property that was completely condemned, the person put drywall up everywhere, sold the property, and we knew there were structural issues. So yes, we placarded that. It was dangerous for the family to live in. And we have continued to let them know that they have to address it.
Awesome. And, um, I also have to just thank you because every time I've asked for a meeting or brought a resident to your attention, you've been more than happy to take the meetings and help the best you can. So thank you for, um, that as well. Uh, I can see if any of my council, um, colleagues have questions as well, uh, starting with my far-right, Councilwoman Rawls.
Uh, good evening. Thank you, Ms. Montgomery, for being here. I was wondering, um, have you been working with Mr. Schuback? I don't want to say his name incorrectly. I know he was trying to get in contact with you when it involves, um, Governor Square. But I don't know if you all have been working together with, with the processes. I know it's a, a lot going on up there. So have you been able to work something out with him?
So I've emailed him and in the very beginning of the year, I met with him. He was somebody that was looking to buy that property. I don't know where that part is at, you know, of anything about that, but. So, yeah, we, we met him and a code officer and I, uh, and went over the issues. He asked us to stop writing citations because the price goes up every thousand dollars for every citation, is what we were told. But we told him, you know, we have to address the complaints that come in. And if they're not taken care of, that's the next process, is to write citations. And that's what we continue to do. Um, we did have a code officer that walked around with him and another employee just last week. It was like a 45-minute walk around the whole property, pointing out things that needed to be taken care of.
Okay. Thank you.
So we are in communication with them.
Okay, good. But, you know, I know there was, um, some communication going, like you said, with the citations. He did mention, um, about not writing the citations. But I, I understand if there's a code violation, you do have to write the citation. So I was just wondering if there was any communication and, um, you know, I know that's a whole other process on seeing what's going on, but I just wanted to see if there was some communication. If you all were still visiting the site, walking around, but you said you are, so.
Yeah, we continue to get complaints into the city. And, I mean, the citation's not the first thing we write. We send the notice and give them so many days to, to correct that violation. If it's not corrected, then that's our next step, is a citation.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. I don't have any further questions.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Majors? Uh, Councilman Mattson?
Yeah, just, you probably went over this and I apologize. I just wanted to make sure I got it. How many properties have been demoed to date this year?
So to date, I do have that down. I have 10 properties to date. Two of them are being worked on right now. And I have, one, the in-house demo, he's just about done and he's going to be going to 1348 Liberty. Um, that has collapsed on the inside. If you look at it from the outside, you might not think it is, but it's totally collapsed on the inside. And the person's been attached to that, it's been living with that. And, uh, that's the next one, the in-house demo is taking down. We have 625 Ross Street, which is bid out. Uh, so once I get the bids in, uh, that will be another one. That would be 12. I'm looking to take down three on Zarcker Street, but I'm waiting for the colder weather because there is no party walls there. That's something else that comes into play because of the stucco. You can only do that, uh, when it's 40 degrees or more. So, um, if I have enough money, I'd like to go to 85 North 18th Street, which is half collapsed and attached. So if all those come down, that would be a total of 19.
Can you remind me what the goal was for this year?
Usually it's, it's about 19. Usually, it's, it's about nineteen, nineteen to maybe, I think, twen- Last year was a lot. I believe he took down a lot of single properties or double properties. So a lot of the ones I did this year were single properties with party walls.
How many buildings remain that would be demoed that are still out there, totally?
So that are collapsing.
No, just, well, I guess we could start with that figure, but I guess that would be ideally, yeah, demoed.
Yeah, the ones that are, I don't believe I have that paperwork, I apologize. I have a list of all the ones that are collapsed for each area, but I'd say there's probably close to maybe sixty.
Sixty?
At least, yeah. And that's the worst of the worst.
Okay. And I guess if you were to go to the ones that aren't necessarily the worst of the worst, how many would that be?
So we rate them from like one to five, one being the worst.
Okay.
Number twos, they're really bad shape, but maybe they haven't started to collapse. But any day, they probably could.
What's a five?
A five is one that's been vacant and just nobody's taking care of it. You might see a lot of chip and peeling paint, broken windows, but it wouldn't take a lot of structural issues that you'd have to bring into compliance.
Okay. So I guess my question, and maybe this will come up during the budget hearings, is, is there any way we can expedite the process so that, I mean, we have sixty that essentially need to go, it sounds like ASAP, but we were only able to do twenty a year on average?
That's right.
How do we make up that difference?
One of the ways would be more money. I could bid out a lot more to have our demo guy doing demolition, just demolition. Unfortunately, a lot of times, he has to be pulled to fill in for, for different vacancies and to help out, so.
Now, would CARES dollars be applicable in this situation?
What kind of dollars?
So the rescue plan money is the city received?
Yeah, I believe I'm supposed to, I've heard the number of one and a half million. That still wouldn't take all those down. I, I believe I start out with five hundred thousand approximately to take down those.
So you're getting, so how much, how many properties could you take down with five hundred thousand dollars?
So I took down, I'm taking down close to twenty.
Okay. So I'm trying to understand, so is, the five hundred thousand dollars you just mentioned, did that come from rescue plan money? Or is that just something we budgeted last year?
That's from budgeting of last year, the CDBG money.
Okay.
And also the general fund.
Okay. Maybe we can talk about this more during budget season. But I guess my question ultimately is just, how do we turn down, or how do we tear down more of these properties? And I understand it's more money, but we just got essentially a once-in-a-generation lump sum of money from the federal government. So how do we make sure that those, if we can use those dollars for that, that it's making up that difference?
So how would I use that money?
No, I, I'm-
I'm sorry.
So I guess what I'm trying to say is, or ask you is, the rescue plan dollars, is there any conversation with this administration on using those to help make up the difference in the blighted properties?
Oh, yeah, I, I believe it's, I've heard the number of one and a half million. It's going to be allocated just for demolition.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, and bear with me, it's just, I know that we've been given these figures, but I don't have them in front of me, so I'm just sort of remembering the, the numbers. But of that money, how many properties could we take down? So it's a million, is that what you said?
I believe it's a million and a half. So if you say five hundred thousand, say twenty,
Sixty properties.
So it'd be twenty, forty, sixty, sixty out of that money.
Okay, so if I'm hearing you correctly, the rescue plan money would be able to make up that difference of the sixty that are still remaining, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So good news, that means the sixty that are outstanding should be taken care of soon.
Yeah, I don't know when I get that money and how that's supposed to be spent, you know, what, yeah. If, I think you may have like two or three years to spend it. I'm not sure, I don't know the particulars of that.
But it sounds like within the next five years, say, we should be able to have eliminated all of the ones per your metrics.
That are at least collapsing, yes.
Better collapsing.
Yes.
I think Director West would also have a better grip on the numbers and the metrics as well with that. Just for your question.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Director West. If you could speak into the mic, please.
Council President, Council Members.
Okay, I, I wasn't trying to step on Anne as Director of Codes, but Codes and Public Works work together on the demolition status. The demolition department employees come from the Public Works Department. And to answer some of the questions that you were asking, Councilman Majors, was that, Anne is correct. The twenty to twenty-four properties per year is the projected number for, that's received for us to accomplish. And we did run out of money this year, but we allocated some money to make it until the end of the year. But at one-point-five-million dollars, we should be able to establish a sixty-home teardown. Because if you go with twenty to twenty-four houses at five hundred thousand dollars, then in three years, it would be sixty homes. But you also have to be contingent of the properties that catch fire, the property that, there's other properties that happens throughout this time that we have this number. So the number will continue to increase. So we, we can project that number, but for further numbers, we'll continue. Also, one of your questions was to be able to accomplish this goal. And part of that would be to hire more demolition specialists within the Public Works Department. We have equipment that, thanks to previous mayor, present mayor, council, that was approved for us to purchase the equipment. We have the equipment, we need the manpower. You know, we have construction companies, but if you go to a construction company that will charge you thirty-five thousand dollars to tear down a home, and you use your own employees, which costs twelve to fifteen thousand dollars to tear down a home, then you could tear down twice as many homes. So in that aspect, if you hire your own people and do things in-house, you can get a lot further and accomplish a lot more, and you can accomplish it at a cheaper price. And also, those same members that are in the demolition department are also part of highway department. And in the winter, during winter season, everyone, all staff falls on snowstorm watch. So during the winter, we don't demolish any homes once it becomes cold enough, just to answer that question also.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Director West.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Montgomery. Madam President?
Thank you, uh, thank you for clarifying. My question was around the in-house demolition, but thank you. I, another question that I have, I think is like the best method of contact for either you or the Code Department because we've seen an influx of residents either coming to council meetings, speaking on the record, or through written commentary in some form, trying to get in touch with Codes, or maybe you specifically. And if it isn't you, and I understand, who, how should someone contact the Bureau of Codes?
Yeah, so the general number for Codes is two-five-five-six-five-five-three. And that comes to the front counter. And yes, we are understaffed right now. Like last week, somebody was on vacation, so there was only one woman there, and she's here less than a month. So extremely busy. But, yeah, that was last week. So that's the number to call, though, two-five-five-six-five-five-three.
Okay, what about some of the forms that are on the city's website? Is it customary that you receive perhaps an influx of property complaint forms? Or how are those forms addressed for those that complete them and submit them to Codes?
So the one woman that works at the front counter, she will print them out from the computer. We, I assign them to a code officer, that code officer addresses that issue. If it's not brought into compliance within a certain amount of time that's given on the notice, then that will go to a citation.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that because, like I said, we have been seeing and hearing from residents regarding the best method of contact. So thanks for clarifying that. And I'm hopeful that those who have inquired are listening so that they can reach out with their, either their complaints or issues that your bureau may be able to assist with. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bowers. Councilman Majors?
Thank you. Uh, could you just repeat that phone number again one more time?
Sure.
Okay, uh, thank you. And then with respect to, I guess based upon President Bowers' questions, you mentioned that there are some staffing issues within the Code Department. In terms of what you were budgeted versus what your current complement is, how many vacancies are there currently within Codes?
We have one vacancy administrator assistant at the front counter. And we also have an opening for commercial inspector. We do have an in-house inspector that is taking certs and studying to be able to move into that position. Because I think that's going to be a very difficult position to fill just because the pay is so low in comparison to what's out there.
Okay. I guess, I guess when we can come, when it gets to budget season, talk about any potential, you know, salary increases. Because I think one thing that we all recognize is, one of the things that, you know, we need to do is make sure that all of our departments are fully staffed. And if salaries are the, one of the impediments that is keeping people from staying with the city or coming to the city, seeing how we can address that within the confines of our, our budget.
It's a union contract problem.
Okay, that's a union, all right, okay. Okay. Then with respect to demolitions and, and dealing with the properties, recognize how large of an issue it was. I currently, I previously served as Public Works Chair, so are aware of, you know, we have hundreds of homes actually on the demo list. You know, we're talking specifically about, we're talking specifically here about the ones that are on the condemned list, not to mention all the emergencies that may come out throughout the year. But do we have a process or what is the process of going after any potential, any of the listed property owners on these properties that we are, you know, demolishing? I know Dolphin County should have some record of who may, they may be delinquent with their taxes, but do we seek to get reimbursed for any of the costs that the city bears to do the demos?
Honestly, almost never do we get reimbursed. We do put a lien up on the property. We do send out a notice of the total cost of what it was to demolish that property. But when they're like ten, twenty years behind in taxes, they're not going to really respond to, well, now you owe us thirty-five, fifty thousand dollars for demolishing your property. But once we don't get a response, then it goes to the lobbyist and they put a lien up against their property.
Okay, and then just lastly on this, then at the time of, so we demolished it, if we do the sale, is there any opportu-, if there's a sale of said property at any point in time, is there any opportunity to recoup any funds through the sale? Or is that still the same issue we run into with them being delinquent for so long?
So if you think about it in practical terms, we have now torn down a house that was so bad, it takes a long time to get there, that property's been neglected, and now you have a vacant lot that no one's going to pay for at tax sale because it's such a big lien on it. And eventually, they tend to go to what's called the repository, official sale, which wipes out the liens.
Okay.
And now there's a new law in place about holding on to certain liens regardless of that sale. And that's, that's not been tested yet, it just came into place, and we'll see if that helps. But it's a problem for everybody because it's like, once a house gets into the system, like it's going to be neglected, it takes so long to get to the other side.
Right.
If someone's going to put money to it. And by the time it gets there, it is almost valueless. And you basically have to lose years of liens and taxes just to get it back into the marketplace again. And HRA often will take them because there's nothing else to do but have the redevelopment authority take, or put it in their portfolio.
Okay, I got it. I guess just from a, a city planning standpoint, like just the hodgepodge of, you know, condemned properties that there are throughout the city, maybe vacant lots here, vacant lots there, makes it difficult for anyone that wants to potentially, you know, build. So that's a larger issue, it's not just Harrisburg, there's, uh, plenty of issues across the state. And hoping that one of our colleagues who may be moving on to higher office could potentially explore looking at solutions there. Thank you, no further questions.
Councilman Majors, if I may, to kind of piggyback, since Anne's taken over, we've worked very close together. Obviously, condemned and vacant, falling-down buildings, derelict buildings with slum lords are a thorn in our side in the fire department. And so we've been working a lot. We were out, and, and I'm not going to give you streets or, or names of, of where it was because it would, it would throw the two property owners under the bus. But we had a burnout that affected three houses. And I was on another building that was falling down. And the landowner was there that owned the other one, and he said, I, I said, hey, what are you going to do with these other two properties? They need to come down, they're a hazard. And he said, well, we only own the one. And the guy that owns the other one has said he doesn't want to pay us to take both of them down. They're, they're connected to a row home. He said, that property owner said, the city will tear it down for free, and it won't cost me anything. So they're, they, they know how the whole system works because once they, he, he spends thirty thousand dollars to tear it down, he's not getting thirty thousand dollars for the lot that he has left, right? So they leave it go. And then what ends up happening, we have to come in and tear it down, liens, and then ten years from now, it ends up on the repository list where HRA ends up with it. And, and that, that's what the scandalous part of what's going on with these vacant and derelict properties. I mean, to, to be really blunt, that's, that's what's happening.
Understood, and we could talk additional offline. I think one of the things that we, we all are very cognizant of, you know, not wanting to disparage anyone particularly, but if we are aware of, you know, we could talk offline to get more information because I think we, we do ourselves a disservice by protecting vacant property owners, absentee landlords, et cetera. You know, we, we need to take all steps possible to try to address those issues. Thank you guys for all your work. This isn't, this is just us trying to, you know, get some additional information. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Daniels?
Yes, so I have a few questions. And do you, I, I don't know if this, if you already commented on this, but do you have kind of a, a record of kind of the rate of compliance, whether it's paying fines or fixing a property this year compared to like last year?
I, I don't know that number, no. I don't, I don't know if I'd be able to find that number. Are you asking for how many properties have been brought into compliance?
Like a rate of compliance, yeah, like, like, let's say, I mean hypothetically, like, did we get a higher compliance rate this year versus last year? Are we attractive to it, to be doing better, doing worse? I don't need like the exact number, just like a rate.
Yeah, I'm sorry, City Council, I would not be able to answer that question.
And since last year, have there been any new tools that the department is using to, to kind of manage their work?
I didn't hear the end of that.
Any new tools the department's using?
To manage their worth. Work, work. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm not aware, no, when, there's no new tools that we're using. We're looking forward to the new MUNIS system. I, I think that'll be very helpful to be able to track in the future. But right now, the system that we have does not do that.
And I, I think that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any further questions from Council for Director Montgomery? All right, Director Montgomery, thank you so much for your presentation this evening. If you wouldn't mind, I'll start with Chief. Thank you, absolutely. Chief Anilai, thank you for joining us.
Good evening, thanks for having us.
Absolutely, if you would like to begin with your quarterly report?
Ten minutes.
Thank you, sir.
We'll see how we do. Michael, keep me in check. So a current overview of where we are, I kind of broke this down a little bit. Personnel, we currently, our complement is at ninety-three, which includes three of us in the command staff, one administrative assistant, four battalion chiefs, four captains, eight lieutenants, and six, sixty-eight firefighters, and one fire inspector. We are, and I should say, we are in a process, just finished up interviews today, we'll be promoting to the newly created deputy chief of training position here in the next week. And then depending where that promotion comes from, we'll have some step-ups from battalion to battalion chief captain, lieutenant. And then we do have a couple of vacancies. One due to firefighter Marty Henderson, who retired on June the fifteenth. He served the city for twenty-seven years and retired again on June fif, June fifteenth.
I'd like to give him a thank you for his service, thank you for twenty-seven years.
Marty, I had the, the opportunity, Marty and I worked together, we were on Tower Two for many years uptown. And he was born and raised in Harrisburg and really was a true homegrown firefighter that tremendously cared about the city and we certainly will miss him.
Absolutely.
Additionally, we have three members that are currently deployed on full-time military leave. So with all the craziness in our world today, three of our members that are, are serving actively in the military. So as, as we look at budget, that, there's a direct impact to where we are currently. Again, we're working on that promotion, the new deputy chief of training. And from a personnel standpoint, there's some information in the packet about our meetings and our joint training and safety board, looking at health, safety, wellness of our members. And that's really taken off and we're really starting to dig data on that, which we've never done in the past. And so we have, we'll have two years of data after this year and we'll be able to start to dig in and supply our members, look at how those injuries are occurring and be able to supply either training, you know, counseling, whatever it may be, to get to a, a better place to, to start to look at those injuries. Obviously, the outlier and everything that we're dealing with right now has still been COVID. We still do see members off on COVID. As recently as last week, Deputy Chief Sadazan was off with COVID. So that, that continues to plague us in the Bureau.
Is he doing okay, Chief?
Yes, he, yeah, he's back to work today.
Awesome.
Or yesterday, Tuesday, he's back to work yesterday. From an operational standpoint, our members completed all the annual hose testing and ladder testing to meet the national consensus standards, which also gives us points on our ISO rating. We continue as we are tonight, as soon as I leave here, I'll be going down to the Harrisburg University Concert on Front Street, staffing events, Front Street festivals, fireworks events and the like to ensure obviously the safety and security of, of those attending. We've been heavily engaged with the South Central Task Force, building that up. As, as we look at it, we rebuilt that from a all volunteer contingent to reach out now, have switched it more to a career contingent with the City of Lancaster, City of York, Mannheim Township, City of Harrisburg and DLA in, on the West Shore to make sure that this region, the, the nine-county region, the South Central Task Force is responsible for, that we have rescue capabilities. And along with that, we've seen three incidents that we responded to just in the last two months, which will be recorded in, in the next report. But our members, Harrisburg Bureau of Fire members, actually removed the victims from two significant building collapses, one in Franklin County and one in Adams County. And it was our folks, City of Harrisburg Bureau of Fire members that made that, that made those, were, were able to bring those folks out of the, out of the collapse. It's the knowledge, skills, abilities and the expertise that they gleaned through all the trainings that we've done. We've sent multiple members to training, full, we've cited a couple of full, full-scale training exercises in Lancaster County with South Central, some quarterly trainings. Multiple members have completed certification training in NFPA compliant training such as technical rescue requirements, vehicle and machinery one, rope rescue one, rope rescue two, water rescue and emergency response and emergency boat operations and rescue. And not, not to diminish the fact that on a daily basis, we're doing some kind of training in-house in, in the city. So whether that has to do with hazmat or simply going out and walking the streets and being familiarized with the, the neighborhoods that we serve, that, that is happening on a, on a daily basis. Dive team members have been participating in bi-monthly training to retain their proficiency. One of the highlights and, and our officers really thank us for this is we finally began to receive all of our fire incident data from Dolphin County digitally right into our records management system. Unfortunately, we're going to have to change record management systems because of a change at the state that's coming down the pipe. But what that has done, it's given us better data to analyze. So just a real high level of what was happening, they would get the response data on the computer, they would have to write it down, then they would have to enter it into our records management system. And there was no real checks and balances between the two. So it really skewed response times and quite frankly, our annual response numbers. So as, as we, as we go through this, it's going to give us some better, more reliable data that we'll be able to draw from and, and start to look at and analyze at, at a much greater detail. We, we, again, and, and I can't under, I can't understate this, we're, we're working to identify those abandoned and condemned buildings. It is a plight that just absolutely bogs down the fire department, it bogs down police and unfortunately, it, it totally bogs down codes and it's something that we need to deal with collectively to address those issues. One of the, one of the fires we had recently was on, was on Allison Hill and it was a, an abandoned building, it was collapsing down in the back, ended up affecting, it caught on fire, ended up affecting two additional homes that were occupied that were attached to it. So the, the need is there, we, you, you can't, you know, our, our guys will tell you, you can't swing a cat without hitting a, an abandoned building in Harrisburg and we need to address that. We need to put the, the funds forth because look, we have to go into those buildings. And Councilman Rodriguez, you, you mentioned it, we have folks staying in them, so we can't, we, we call them abandoned, we don't call them vacant, vacant means there's nothing in them. We have so many homeless and, and others that are in there for nefarious activities and if there's a fire, it's a life, we don't care who they are, we have to rescue them, we have to put our folks in harm's way in these buildings that are falling down before we even get there. And, and it's, it's a, it's a, you know, it's a safety concern for the citizen, Dan, and also for our firefighters. We, again, we're working with codes on, on inventory in those buildings. We took Director Montgomery's list and I actually imported those into Google Earth, which you have a copy of and I neglected, I should have sent you the link to the Google Earth map. But just on, and these are a mixture of the, of the worst of the worst, just on Allison Hill, on a very small subset of Allison Hill, there's forty-nine buildings that are identified and mapped out. And we're using this now with our computer-aided dispatch so that our firefighters know at dispatch, when that address comes up, that there, it's a potential condemned, derelict building that we're going to, so that they're, they can be on high alert and, and understand what they're getting into before they get there. And we're going to continue to build that. Many firefighters across the country have died in these types of buildings, we want to make sure that that doesn't happen to our firefighters. Budget, we're, overtime is unfortunately trending up and we, I'm just going to be blunt with you, we're going to be over budget and we'll be asking for a reallocation to offset that. And that's doing part to COVID, the military leave and then also training. We've conducted a ton of training this year and we had to send three of our cadets back to hack for the EMT portion of the program. They just finished up actually last night and they had to go back because of the way the, the college started the academy, we were not able to make that, that initial deadline. So three of them didn't have EMTs, so we had to send them back. So we had to take those three off the street as well for a few weeks as they went through EMT training. We did use some volunteer money from the Mount Pleasant Fire Company, which is out on Allison Hill. We replaced fifteen thousand dollars worth of flooring in the building that was built in nineteen fifty-six. And so that's making that area nice, it's shared by both the volunteers and the career staff on Allison Hill. And our, our grant asked for that again next year through to Mount Pleasant will be to continue the renovations of that building. To date, the volunteer fire company, just, and just that one in particular, has spent almost a hundred thousand dollars of grant money on that building to make it habitable for us to continue to operate and serve the city. There's, we'll also be asking for a part of that budget reallocation, some grant funding that we receive back, looking for a trailer and a UTV. And with that, you have a packet that's pretty extensive, gives you a pretty good overview of what we've done the first, the second quarter, I'm sorry. And, you know, as you go through that, if there's any questions, I'm certainly happy to answer those for you.
Absolutely, thank you for your presentation and report, Chief. I just had one question quickly. Is there any updates to how the Paxton Firehouse would be restored or any further use for it or will it kind of sit?
The Paxton Fire Station on Second Street?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. Paxton's a sore subject with Chief Anilai. So the Paxton, the Paxton Fire Station is actually, Neil and I just talked about it, there's a lot of deed issues with that and dates back to eighteen thirty-six.
Wow.
We may have to go to the historical commission to prove the actual deed lines. Yeah, so that, that's been the stumbling block for that. The Riverside Fire Station, which I know has been an issue, I know it wasn't specifically a question, but one of our other ones that the city currently owns, that deed combination will be coming, I believe in front of council, maybe it already did.
It did, that's, that's to outside council, they're doing the work to get that transferred to HRA, who then has to consolidate two lots that were owned by the city and this volunteer company into one lot to make it saleable.
Okay.
And there's lots of interest in.
Yeah, a, a lot of interest in it. And again, a very complex, very complex real estate deal. Doesn't seem like, well, anything that we own citywide for real estate is very complex with, with deed and title.
Well, thank you for that. I'll start to my immediate right, Councilwoman Daniels. Any questions for Chief? Did we lose her? Councilwoman Daniels, can you hear us?
Um, yes, and I don't have any questions.
Awesome, thank you so much. Councilman Majors?
Thanks, no questions for Chief. Stuff I want to talk about, I can't talk about, so.
Thank you for that.
We can talk offline, sir.
All right, Councilwoman Bowers?
Thank you, thank you, Chief Anilai, and I don't have any questions, but thank you for your report.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilman Madison?
Yeah, one question regarding staff complement. You know, nationally, we're seeing this labor shortage. We know within police that we're seeing less new cadets entering into the system. Are you seeing a similar trend with firefighters?
So we are not seeing a downward trend in those taking the test. And our, our list is still current. We would, we would like to hire probably an additional six to ten in twenty twenty-three. I believe that we have enough to accomplish that. What we're seeing is because the, the number of volunteers has dwindled, it's forced municipalities to start hiring firefighters, not many, but hiring some firefighters. And so we're seeing these candidates taking multiple tests and we've never seen it before because the, the, the job market hasn't been what it is. But they'll be on three different lists. As an example, one of the cadets that I'll be with on Thursday at the Fire Academy is on our list and was, was in the top ten to be hired. However, he just got hired in another agency. So we're, we're seeing that more than we ever have just because of, you know, a mass exodus too, right? A lot of retirements across the board. And then, you know, it's a dangerous job, not everybody wants to do it.
Right. No, totally understand. Yeah, no, the reason is just, price is obvious, but the lower the pool, the more, I mean, competitive we have to be with salaries, which then makes the whole thing more expensive.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. You know, there's, there's a lot to look at there. Quite frankly, and, and I, I think you guys know me to wear my, my emotions on my sleeve. The reason firefighters come to Harrisburg is because we have a significant fire load. We go to a lot of fires in the City of Harrisburg because we have a lot of derelict buildings. And that's, that's why people want to be here as opposed to agency B that doesn't have as many derelict buildings as we do.
Just out of curiosity, I know most fire departments are volunteer, who else offer, who are we competing with regionally?
So we're not even looking regionally. It is, it is, it crosses state lines. South of the border sucks a lot of our firefighters from Pennsylvania because it's county-based in Maryland.
Right.
Maryland takes a lot of our quality candidates down there. And it, and we're so close to the border, that's, that's what hurts. So somebody that lives in Scranton isn't necessarily going to travel down there, somebody that lives in the Harrisburg area is going to travel over that border in a heartbeat. And Virginia, we're seeing a big uptick in Virginia as well, which isn't from a, and they're working a twenty-four, forty-eight schedule or, or in some cases, they're working forty-eight hour schedules now. So you get to drive down and back one time every seven days, that's, that's not a bad gig.
All right, and then one last question. I know it's been discussed before that surrounding municipalities have been struggling with their volunteer fire departments and been thought of, I think, to maybe see if we could contract with them, similar to what we've done with trash collection. Is that something that you think would be lucrative for the city or do you think essentially we would just break even given that some of these smaller communities don't have very big budgets?
I, I, I don't believe that it'll be lucrative for us. However, I believe that if we market it correctly, because of the need that's in the city, we have to, we have to protect the city number one. And, and I've said this multiple times, you know, there was a study done in twenty-ten that, that said, the more people you have on apparatus, and, and they, they quantified this because we, we can say it all day long, they quantified it with percentages of how much more effective you are. And what we're looking at is increasing our manpower here in the city to protect our citizens better. I think that there's a, there's something to say with looking outside the city and, and legally, there's some issues, right? We can't, we can't give them service for free by putting career staffing in another adjoining municipality. However, I think that there's a highway there to get there that instead of us building multiple new fire stations in Harrisburg, because we're soon going to be at a point where the fire stations we have are full of guys, because we've been fortunate to be able to staff a, a lot higher than what we had in the past. We're running three and four folks on fire trucks now where we used to run two, not effective with two, extremely effective with three and four. Just the other night, if you watch the video, it's on Channel Five Ratchet News. And, and look, there right away, look how fast that water's on that fire. A minute and forty-two seconds after that fire truck arrives on scene, there's water on that fire and it's stopping the progression of that fire. That doesn't happen outside of the City of Harrisburg. It happens because our guys are there fast, it happens because we have staffing. And I think we, we build upon that staffing and use that as a leverage back into the city because what that, what that lack of volunteers outside the city does, it harms us when we have that second alarm fire, we're not getting the numbers back in. We just recently redid our box alarm system and doubled the amount of fire trucks we bring in so that we can get additional manpower to the scene. We had to double the amount of apparatus to get an extra couple of folks. And, and that's the, that is, the, the volunteer fire service, and this is no disrespect to them, I'm, I'm one, is collapsed in Pennsylvania and there's no saving. We can continue to throw dollars at it at the state level, at the federal level and say that we're going to recruit and retain. It doesn't work, it's failed, it's done, it's over. We need to look at being more progressive about it. And I think by, by putting this career, figuring out how we, we do it efficiently, put those career staffing out in the community, get a little bit of money back from them, it gives us. get a little bit of money back from them, it gives us response back into the city as well. Obviously, we don't want to put 1,000 firefighters out there. However, an additional 15, 20, 25 makes an absolute world of difference. And if we can, if we can offset that by some kind of a stipend from that municipality that they can afford, all the better. Unfortunately, you know, we had that set up with Paxting, I'm not going to go into that and get frustrated with it. But they decided to go with another volunteer agency that has a history of not getting out the calls and not a very good response time. It's not good for the public and and that's what we're seeing regionally. And it's, I would not want to live outside the four walls of the city of Harrisburg unless you're contingent and we're running mutually because we're usually there first.
One last one. I know in the past, some homeowners have these systems that essentially automatically call the fire department. And I know that that's, it may not be a full blown fire, but how, how much cost is associated with that? And do you have any ideas on what we can do to sort of limit that?
False alarms were 24.47% of our Q2. A full 25%, one quarter, one out of every four calls that we go on is a false alarm. And and that's not a, that's not a somebody smelled smoke. That's where a fire alarm system activated and there was no fire, a full 25%. It is an absolute tough thing because of the number of homeowner systems that are out there that have been sold by many, many companies, some good, some not so good. And they locate these detectors in places where, quite frankly, they shouldn't be. And we end up out there, we, you know, I could give you a list of problem properties that we have. We've taken a stance and have changed with some of our high clientele, high response clientele, and had them take smoke alarms down and put in heat detectors. As long as the building's fully sprinkled, we're allowing them to put heat detectors in in areas where there's smoke detectors. We're giving us a plethora of false alarms.
So if we lowered that 24% to say 12%, would that have an impact on the overtime?
No, overtime's not affected by the response to calls. What it does, though, I've included an overlapping call sheet that shows clearly how many overlapping incidents, meaning we're out on one call and another call comes in and we have to divert resources to it. And and that list continues to grow year over year. And again, that's why we want to look at expanding our ranks within the, in the walls of the city so we can better handle some of those incidents that are going on. But there's a direct effect of those false alarms. It's a nationwide issue. It is not a Harrisburg centric issue. It is a nationwide issue.
Yeah, okay. I don't want to get you on, but that is something I think we really should take a look at and draft some policies or some sort of initiative to limit that.
So we do find, and unfortunately, the, again, the, our high clientele pay the bill. And, you know, they just keep going, right? And it's unfortunate, and by the time you get to four, it's $1,000 per response.
And they're just paying it.
And they're just paying it, yeah. I don't have those numbers. I can get those numbers through IT on what that has been. And police department are doing the same thing with false, false alarms with burglar alarms too.
Be nice to afford that expense.
I know, I know. You can't afford that on a fire chief's salary or a city council salary.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Ross?
I have no questions and good evening to you.
Good evening.
Director Interline, you're welcome. Thank you for your detailed report.
Thank you, Chief Interline, for joining us once again. Look forward to the many great things you and your team will be doing in the future. And thank you for your service thus far.
Thank you. It's always a pleasure.
Absolutely. Thank you. And that will officially conclude the public safety report. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Chair Rodriguez. We will now move to the work of the Public Works Committee. I will defer the floor to Chair Madsen.
I'm going to be proactive here. Make sure you can speak into the mic.
Yes.
Okay, and could you state your name for the record?
David West, Director of Public Works for the city of Harrisburg.
Austin Griffin, Deputy Director of Public Works.
All right. Just give us a 10 minute or brief overview of your works thus far this year.
Okay, again, good evening, Madam President, council, council members.
Actually, before you get, I think we should note for the, for the public that you just recently started this position. Remind me.
July 6.
Okay, so in the last few months.
Yes. And what, if we can, we're going to, Austin has been here since the beginning of the year. And we would like, and we would like for him to give, I guess, the first quarter report. And I can give a report since my return up until the present.
That'd be helpful. Thank you.
Before we start, to, so I don't forget, to answer Councilwoman Ross's question to Dan Buck?
Yeah, Mr. Schuback.
Mr. Schuback, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's okay.
We are working with Public Works, working with Mr. Schuback. And we are working with him with the places that he has dumpsters. We are trying to remove the dumpsters and place containers. We have demonstrated our cameras to him, for him to purchase cameras. So he, a lot of his problem is illegal dumping that we are very well aware of. So we are going to work with him with the entire property to try to cease a lot of what is going on over there, you know, for the residents and the city itself.
Right, thank you. That, that was my concern is the citizens. You know, I know there's a lot of things going on, things that we're not, we can't speak about right now for many different reasons. But I feel as long as we're putting the citizens first in what we're doing, that, that was just my thing, so. Communication and putting them first. So thank you. That helped.
Okay, you're welcome.
Good evening, council members. The Public Works Department quarterly report consists of our sanitation department picking up municipal waste in Harrisburg, Stilton, Pembroke and Paxting. The numbers for Harrisburg are 7,387.23 tons. For Stilton, 3,342.89 tons. For Pembroke, 260.8 tons. And Paxting, 131.21 tons. As far as recycling goes, Harrisburg recycled 191.22 tons. Stilton, 53.21 tons. Pembroke, 41.36 tons. Paxting, 23.52 tons. And a total of cardboard recycled was 223.61 pounds. Our disposal is 200, no, 2.42 tons. Our, our administrative department took on 2,415 phone calls along with 1,624 emails. Our highway department tackled 143.23 tons of illegal dumping. We picked up 61.75 tons of bulk. And we picked up 31.48 tons of yard waste. We also patched 72 potholes. Our vehicle maintenance center serviced 367 vehicles for the first, for the first quarter. The first quarter also consists of snow plowing, which we've had quite a few events this year. On 1/7/22, we had an event that we had 11 guys out plowing and salting for eight hours. On 1/9/22, we had 11 guys out salting for six hours. It was a freezing rain event. On 1/6 and 1, 1/16 and 1/17, we had 13 guys out plowing and salting for 17 hours. 1/28, we had three salting for four hours. It was a light, light snow that really was just like a coating that the salt kind of took care of the problem. On 1/29, we had two guys out salting for six hours. It was like a ice, no, that was for the fire department. There was ice on the roads from the fire and we had to go out and spread salt for them. 2/4, we had nine guys out salting for two hours. 2/5, one, one salting for one hour. That was a fire on Grand Street. 2/15, two salting for three hours. It was a light coating. 2/25, four salting for four hours, sleet and freezing rain event. On 3/10, there was two guys salting for three hours, another freezing rain event. And 3/12, we had 11 guys plowing and salting for five and a half hours. I want to just say the thank you to the Parks and Rec Department because they do help us out with that. They give us eight guys each time we request them when needed. So our second quarter totals consist of, for Harrisburg, 7,033.43 tons of municipal waste. For Stilton, 3,133.31 tons. Pembroke, 210.6 tons. Paxting, 126.96 tons. And for recycling, Harrisburg was 193.51. Stilton, 54.11. Pembroke, 39.24. Paxting, 22.43. And we picked up 213.81 pounds of cardboard and disposed of 3.66 tons of tires. Our administration department took on 2,077 phone calls and 1,204 emails. Our highway department picked up 160.86 tons of illegal dumping and 54.63 tons of bulk and 65.37 tons of yard waste and filled 58 potholes. Our vehicle service, our VMC serviced 352 vehicles that quarter. And that quarter moves us into the paving season, which is, we have specific dates from liquid fuels which we are allowed to pave, to be reimbursed. And we paved on 5/12 on 21st Street between Rudy Road and Swatara Street. I don't know if you want like the totals for that or or you just want to know locations?
Just location.
Okay, so on 5/26, we paved Pemberton Street between 19th and Glen. On 6/24, we paved Bellevue Road from 2000, the address of 2000 through the address of 2014. And those were all liquid fuels paving projects. We did two non-liquid fuels projects, some patching on City Island and an alley which was Glen Street between Sycamore and Pemberton. And that's pretty much our report for the two quarters. We don't really have totals for the third quarter because it's not over yet.
Okay, upon my return, my primary focus is to receive a full compliment of employees with the Public Works Department. And from July 6 up to the present, in Public Works, we have hired 11 employees. We have four employees that are in background currently. And we have interviews in the next two weeks of four more employees. Our issue, as it was talked about earlier in this meeting, is being competitive. You know, we, as far as our vehicle maintenance center, we are just not competitive with the other industries out there who are paying $30 or more an hour for mechanics. We're trying to do some things to make a turnaround. And one of the things that we have just had a labor management meeting about and a union agree to was to take a mechanic one and change it to a mechanic two that will raise the salary. So we can try to receive at least some auto mechanics. And we have some ideas to take to labor management meetings about some turnarounds when it comes to heavy equipment mechanics, which are mechanic force. And that aspect, we're going to try to become more competitive with the mechanic industry. And we also have a couple of great vendors who have placed us as top priority for our heavy equipment. So if we do have issues, we can take it straight to them or they will, we come, they will come on site to service us, which keeps us going. And we have been working with special entities. We, we did Hotspot Saturday with Councilman Rodriguez. It was very successful in six Saturday events of cleanup. We have been working with other entities. We've been working with working with Wild Heart Ministries, thank you, Wild Heart Ministries, the community action and all of their different aspects of cleanups. You know, we participate in any cleanup that any community that are having in, in their area, we, we have special funding to be involved in community cleanups that was put into and account for cleanups throughout the communities themselves. So in that aspect, we have worked with a couple of projects with residents throughout the city that have created their own cleanups. And that's been very successful also. I have a report from the Traffic Engineering Department. And we have four new employees in the Traffic Engineering Department. And we are doing sign projects. We're replacing all out of date signs and poles. We are painting no parking triangles around the city. Stop bars, the word stop and painting the curve, the yellow curves that's for no parking. We have training planned because the four employees that we have are, are traffic ones and they need training. So we have training planned for them to increase their knowledge of the traffic department itself. We are also, and we just got the numbers for Molde Square Project is on schedule. Second, the Second Street is going to be paved this Thursday and Friday and the opening ceremony, ceremony October 13. The 17th, Seventh Street project is at 98% complete. So that's the report that I received from the Traffic Department. They just got it together for me and I needed to make sure that you all received the report of what's going on and those major projects. We also are projecting to take on some of the projects that we have going on throughout the city of the Second Street project and place it in-house to do some of these projects ourselves that are smaller so we don't have to continue to outsource everything that we do because we have professional employees that can do the same thing at not of a, as large scale, but a smaller scale. Who will not have to not only spend the money, we will have to, we will be able to do in-house projects so our residents can see how well our department works also. That concludes.
Okay, thank you for that. So my first question is, given we're seeing this labor shortage and it seems to be with us for some time. So, uh, my first question is, given we're seeing this, uh, labor shortage and it seems to be, it will be with us for some time, when it comes to the contracts we have with surrounding municipalities, in your opinion, with our current capacity, is that sustainable? And in the sense that are we earning enough money from these contracts that it pays for the staff, given that we may have a situation where due to the fact we have a labor shortage nationally, that we may have to raise salaries in order to keep and maintain workers? If that makes sense?
Yes, yes, we, we, we are going to have to be, continue to be competitive and become more competitive. Uh, presently, I have an employee that just put in a, a notice that is going to work for a competitor waste hauling company for more money. You know, uh, a lot of these, uh, companies are paying higher salaries, but they cannot compete when it comes to, uh, the plan that we have that goes along with our salaries.
Benefits?
With the benefits, the benefit package, they don't have. You know, some individuals, they look at just money. There's other individuals who look at time packets. Some, some individuals, the medical plans, and some individuals are looking for long-term plans, a place that they can retire from. There's not, uh, a lot of entities out here today who has a pension plan like the city of Harrisburg. So we are at the, to far as I'm concerned, we're at the top of the list when it comes to that. So when you're looking for a future, I share in every interview that I am a part of that, uh, uh, we are not, this is not a job, this is a career because you don't have the, all the assets that we have and still call it a job.
Uh, just to, thank you for that. And then just to follow up, the contracts we have with the surrounding municipalities, I guess, is that something you see as worthwhile to continue? Is it generating enough revenue for it to make sense for us or are we breaking even or is it costing us?
No, we're not losing any money as, as, as far as the intergovernmental agreements. The intergovernmental agreements actually, each year, the price increases. So the manpower that we have received to continue to hire, once we receive a full complement, we will be able to accomplish those goals. And we're, and, and future, we are going to actually separate some of the, uh, cardboard out of the trash. We are, uh, we met with Stilton's administrative, administration and we're gonna pull the cardboard out of their waste so we can pick up the cardboard separately. There's small things that you need to tweak in order to accomplish the same feat at, at either the same cost or a lower cost. And we have the manpower to do it, once we become a full complement in the departments of Highway and Sanitation.
Great. So I guess I'll just reveal a little blunt here. So if all of the contracts tomorrow were up, would you continue them with the inner, the other surrounding municipalities?
Yes.
Okay. Then something I think, just recently, we did a constituent services meeting with a constituent that wanted to know when their street was getting paved. I know we sort of make these determinations where you're making them now and then you're gonna present a budget and then that sort of sets it. Do you have any thoughts on how we could kinda communicate that better to the public as to, these are the streets that are getting paved? This is when your street will get paved? Any thoughts there?
Well, what, what we do, we, is we create a list as we continue to go throughout the city from the worst to the least worst, if I may say. And we also take the same list as we have, we receive calls about streets that needs to be, need to be paved. We place that into the same list and we prioritize that list. And then we go forth with either, uh, if they're Liquid Fuels and, uh, neighborhood service funds. And we try to attack the major streets, then go to secondary and then alleys in that category.
And our, uh, engineering department does make up a list of larger-scale projects that they contract out to get done.
Uh, last one is regards to bulk pickups, trash collections, especially in lighted properties. They tend to be, is doing some of the Hot Spot Saturdays with Councilman Rodriguez. We kinda see lighted structures. There's also a lot of illegal dumping that happens there as well. What could we be doing to better? Is it more money or resources or more manpower to address cleaning up those, uh, high dumping sites?
Well, we are, at the present time, we have a dozen cameras and we are placing cameras at those sites, those hotspot sites. And, uh, we're trying to catch culprits because we did put out there that we're out to get them and we're gonna get them. And we will continue to clean up as it continues. The thing is, we have to catch them. You know, we, we have to, and they have to be punished severely to the most severance of the law. And that's the only way it's gonna, going to have some kind of ceasing to dumping, illegal dumping in our city. But we'll get them. And we also, to answer your question, we, we are gonna continue to clean up but there's properties that because of the union aspect, we're not allowed to go on. There's, uh, like vacant properties that we are not allowed to go clean out. You know, so we have to contract some of these entities out. And if not, that's also going to spread.
Okay. Just to piggyback off that is, one of the things I've seen is that because Harrisburg's such a transient community, people kinda move and then they in and then they, they rent and then they leave. And it's, what I've seen is that where you have high transient renters, typically that's where you see a lot of dumping because I think what happens is they either get evicted or have to move, whatever their circumstances are, they leave a lot of stuff. The landlord then doesn't know what to do with it, gets a pickup truck, waits till dead of night, finds an empty lot or a lighted structure and then dumps the things there. Or sometimes I think it may be the tenant because when it gets really bad, and I've done some of these cleanups, I see a lot of personal items, IDs, things like that, toys. So I think what happens is the tenants don't know what to do and so they just do something similar and just find a place or an alleyway to put, put their stuff. Is there any way we can communicate with landlords or tenants just to say, if you're in this situation and you simply do not know what to do, Public Works will help or assist with taking this stuff before they just decide to use their own methods and do illegal dumping?
That's good. That's a good question. Because, yeah, the answer to that is yes. And, uh, there is a small fee for us to pick up the extra dumping that is on properties. But we're there. We have put back in place the sanitation enforcement that we once had. We have that again. We put a clam truck out every day just for illegal dumping and reported dumping. And just for that measure alone, we continue to, our clam truck and a small loader, if needed, to run through areas of the city just to clean up wherever we can clean up. And it's important that we all understand that the purpose of sanitation enforcement team was just for that. And they will go and go into that rubbish, dig into that rubbish with their hands, with gloves on, of course. And they will find some information to be able to attack whoever dumped this, uh, illegal dumping. We would find them. We would find out who dumped this stuff illegally. And it was given to the code department who, that's just, it's just not something that they do. It's something that we do. So it, it would be important to reestablish the sanitation enforcement to be able to go to the court hearings, to take these individuals to court so they can understand that you just can't dump anywhere in our city and think that it's okay. And, and we will find you. In some way, we will find you because our sanitation enforcement team, we talk to the community, you know, and, and we let them know that their name will not be mentioned, you will not be heard of. And we just need to know how this is going on. Help you, help us help you and your community. And it has, it happened. And we started to, uh, uh, a very good relationship with those. And we were going to court and we, and there were citations being administered. And now it has ceased, but we need to bring it back.
Okay. Yeah, if there's just, because here's my thing, if somebody's getting evicted for whatever reason and they're in a bad situation, and I understand that maybe if we look through the trash or their items, we might find out who they are, but I, I'm sympathetic to some of these people. I mean, they just may be down on their luck. I don't know that pursuing them, I'm talking about the renters that may just be in a bad situation. I don't know, pursuing them for the full extent of the law. I mean, it could be like a more humane solution and that could just simply be trying to find proactive measures to let them know that there is help. I mean, we have a program where, uh, you know, if you're a senior on a fixed income, we help you with your trees. Couldn't we do a similar program for, uh, low-income renters that may find themselves in that situation? Simply waive those fees so that they can just, we can take those bulk items so they're not in a dire situation where a landlord feels like, oh, okay, I'll just get rid of the stuff or they may have to feel like they use their own means to get rid of it.
Set up, uh, that type of program, but we have to define it to, uh, from the letter I to the letter T.
Oh, understood. Absolutely.
That, there are people who are not low-income and do not need to help them, try to take advantage of them.
Absolutely. No, I totally get that. And that's something we'd have to read out, but that's just something that's been on my mind as a way to...
Sure, that's possible.
Okay.
Presently, our, our residents are able to put one bulk item out.
Right. Yeah, and I'm just thinking, a situation where somebody might have a couch, a bed and a dresser drawer and just is like, I don't know what to do. Okay, that concludes it. Um, so I'll open it up to my colleagues and just, given all of his dynamic work with, uh, trash collection this past summer, we'll kick it to our far left with Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Chair Madsen. Uh, gentlemen, thank you for joining us. Um, I wanna start my sentiments just by thanking you guys. Director West, you jumped in from the start, coming back and have been proactive and, uh, answered every call I've made and, you know, was very helpful. Deputy Austin, um, you've been amazing. I've seen you operate almost every vehicle possible, uh, throughout the city. And your patience with your staff is just phenomenal. So thank you, gentlemen. Um, your help and assistance with Hot Spot Saturdays was phenomenal. Your checkups, you know, every day we had it, making sure we know where the containers are to the staff. You guys have been phenomenal. So thank you. And also to Percy and his team, uh, just with the signage and the trafficking, I've noticed, you know, uh, definitely an improvement, um, since I've taken council at least. So thank you all, absolutely. And, um, I just had a question, uh, for you gentlemen. The special funding that you had mentioned for cleanups, is that just for Harrisburg or the municipalities that we service?
For Harrisburg only.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that. And then with the cameras, um, we, it was something we had written in with Hot Spot Saturdays, but also it's, it's an ongoing topic that we discussed for a while in the city. What would be the definitive, um, I guess, play where we can just get them up and start observing?
Well, we have two cameras in place presently.
Awesome.
And we have ten cameras that we are waiting for. There's a special battery that's used for these cameras that we had to order.
Okay.
And we're waiting for them to come in. And once the batteries are in, we will place the ten cameras throughout the city.
In the spots, okay.
And we will, we, we have hotspots, but we are also looking for, uh, interactive from the community. And we will place cameras, but these cameras, we can move throughout the city or at, at different periods of time. We primarily like to have each camera in place for two weeks, periods of time. And then we'll move them to, uh, other parts of the city, throughout the city.
Awesome. And, um, I have no further questions, just a statement. I mean, the volunteer turnout as well as your staff, um, help throughout the initiative, I look forward to next year's Hot Spot Saturdays. And I mean, just Friday alone, over, over three hundred volunteers. It was just amazing to see and be a part of. So I, I just look forward to next year and how we can improve and make it bigger and brighter for the citizens of Harrisburg. So thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
No further sentimental questions, Chair Madsen.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Council majors?
Thank you and, uh, thank you, uh, Director West. One question I do have, oh, sorry, nope.
Forgot. Councilwoman Daniels?
Um, no questions.
Council majors?
All right, thank you. Um, one question I do have, uh, I know your pre, during your previous stint, we, we talked about, um, we had some internal conversations about, uh, maybe doing some type of ordinance to deal with some of the, uh, the trash that comes around our corner stores. Uh, we talked about like doing a corner store ordinance or something to try to help, um, deal with trash that can accumulate in a lot of our, uh, corner stores across the city. Is that something that you're willing to look at exploring this year and we can work with, um, you know, Public Works, uh, Chair Madsen and, uh, Law Bureau on, on that?
Yes, we are. Because you're, you're correct, Councilman, it is a problem. And it's an issue that we need to deal with. So we construct, uh, certain areas for them and have enclosures for that type of scenario because they have much more trash than the average resident who lives next door from these corner stores.
Right, okay. No further questions at this time, um, but I may have some additional ones in writing for later. Thank you, Councilman, uh, Madsen.
Thank you. President Bowers?
Thank you. Uh, good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for, uh, being here tonight and for your report. I'm hopeful that at least the Harrisburg data can be shared on the website. I think it's nice to see, um, the amount of work in, in the numerical data that you shared and the tons of, of work literally and figuratively that you're, um, removing. And, um, I really appreciated the illegal dumping numbers. And I think that's important since it is a conversation that, um, has come up more frequently. So thank you very much and I'm hopeful that again, at least the city's, um, data can be shared. Thank you.
Yes, we do have, we do have, um, numbers from the cleanups too.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Ross?
Thank you, Councilwoman Madsen. And, um, good evening to you both and thank you for coming. Being down here last this time go around, um, my questions have been asked and answered. Some I didn't even think of. I was like, that's a good question. But, um, yeah, everything's been asked and answered. Just thank you for the, the job you all are doing. So, um, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, any final questions? Okay, seeing none, we will conclude this. Thank you so much for your report and your service.
Thank you.
Have a great day or night.
Thank you, uh, Chair Madsen. Before we move to the work of the Building and Housing Committee, I'd like to take a two-minute break. So please bear with us for two minutes and then we will, we will resume. Thank you. Okay, our two minutes has expired. I'd like to resume our meeting. We will now move to the business of the Building and Housing Committee. I will defer to Chair Majors.
Thank you, President Bowers. Mr. Important to hear from the Bureau of IT if you can proceed with your quarterly report, that'd be great.
Good evening, Council. My name's Steve Porter, I'm the IT Director. My report tonight will be brief, you probably don't even need to start the timer. I'm going to give you an update on the Operation Municipal Migration Project, which is the project to migrate our five core systems to the municipal system from Tyler Technologies. The systems are three mainframe systems and then our finance system and our payroll system. We do have a steering committee for the project. We have scheduled biweekly meetings. We don't always meet because of a conflicting meeting, but they are on the calendar. We currently have 25 city employees who have spent some amount of time on the project. They report that on a time sheet, and there's been about 1,025 hours from those employees put into the project so far through last week. The big phase right now is the financials, which is the finance, e-finance system. We have the chart of accounts built in our production environment. We have our vendor conversion file ready to import into our production environment as well. We had our first pass through that. We had some issues we needed to address, and they're ready to run the second pass through. Next thing we're working on is our budgets and actuals for 2020, 2021, and 2022. It will be imported into the system. We have our project ledger, which is for grants and the big projects that we work on. And then we're also building our security and user roles for everybody who will have access to the system. The next phases will get started in the fourth quarter, which is human capital management and then our tax billing and collections. The current project plan runs through early 2024 for all six phases. And most of the Tyler resources are working remotely, which will help to keep the total cost of the project down. We currently have approved purchase orders of 656,000. We spent 372,000 of that so far through last week. The current POs, we have about 284,000 left. There will be one other PO will open this year for 325,000. And then based on the complete migration to the system, we'll start realizing savings in 2024. So that's the big project we're working on now. Our biggest challenge is filling open positions. Currently have three. Our deputy director position's been open since April. We do have an interview on Thursday for that position. Our GIS administrator, that position's been open since June. Also have an interview on Thursday for that one. And then our help desk PC specialist has been open since June. We have a candidate that we made an offer to today, so hopefully he accepts that offer. We implemented the new voiceover IP system in May, and we're winding down our contracts with the existing vendors. So that will save our telephone costs over $25,000 per year, which is pretty significant. And then we have a few enhancements to that system that we want to work on as we get the resources and the time to do that. One of the things that was approved earlier this year is the virtual public meetings because of open positions and other priorities that has been delayed, unfortunately. We did have one vendor give us a quote. We do want to talk to other vendors, but that's kind of been on hold for right now. We did have one hard meeting last week. It was kind of a hybrid meeting where one of the board members was removed. That went pretty well. And then the final thing, we do have eight printers, new printers on order since August. And because of supply chain issues, they backordered till October. So those are the high level things that we're working on right now.
All right, thank you. So I think you talked about the municipal system, and I appreciate that update. The questions that I had regarding that were answered in your in your statement. So we're looking at early 2024 for the complete turnover. I guess one question, and then once we realize all of this work being done, you know, we talked about the cost savings for the VoIP, what would be the cost savings? Do you have an estimate on cost savings for that transfer?
There, we're probably looking at a quarter million dollars per year.
Okay.
Over what we're currently spending on mainframe costs plus the other two systems.
Okay, great.
And the mainframe costs, for whatever reason, have been going up pretty significantly year over year.
Yeah, yeah.
That quarter million dollars is maybe low.
Right, no, I can imagine, especially with all the shortages and, you know, and and equipment tech on the age of the mainframe, the people that are able to, you know, do the work on it, can send those cost overruns. I guess with respect to the open positions, taking a brief look at what the salary ranges are on our site, has there been any discussion with the administration about increasing those? I know, just in terms of trying to be competitive in those position, and all those positions are management. There wouldn't be any union issues with those, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to, you know, on behalf of IT and, you know, work with the administration on, see what we can do on on potentially increasing the salary. Because is that what you're hearing from candidates that have applied for the job and been accepted?
We have done that with the help desk position. We have had discussions with Dan and the mayor about increasing overall IT salaries across the board in the 2023 budget. So once we get through that process, then I believe, yes, we will see an increase in these other two positions plus the other four that we currently have.
Okay, then lastly, for me would be on virtual public meetings. Is there a RFP out there, or you're just looking to like taking invitations to bid on that system?
We did talk to the vendor who has provided a lot of other communications equipment for us. I had a meeting back early summer with Zoom, and they put me in contact with a couple of under other vendors. I had another vendor reach out to me who would be interested. So I have at least three more that I would like to talk to to get them to put a proposal in front of us as well.
Okay, so is it is it just more conversations? There's not like an official invitation to bid?
That's correct.
Okay.
More informal at this point, yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I guess at some point, maybe if we need to, you know, if we're going to be talking to all these companies, we may need to, I don't know if it's, you know, kind of based upon the cost, if we need to do an RFP or, you know, invitation.
It may, depending on the cost.
Right, okay. All right, no further questions from me at this time. I will start start to my far right with Councilwoman Ross. Any questions?
Good evening, and thank you for coming. I don't have any questions. You answered it with your report about the new system. So I'm excited to see that go underway, I think we all are, so. So thank you, just keep us posted on everything.
Thank you, Councilman Madsen.
No questions from me, thank you.
Thank you, President Bowers.
Good evening, I don't have any questions. Thank you for your report.
Thank you, Councilwoman Daniels?
Councilwoman Daniels has signed off.
Okay, thank you. And Councilman Rodriguez?
Thank you, no questions. I just wanted to thank you and your team for your due diligence, helping a lot of the email and, you know, technical difficulties I've been having since the beginning. So thank you, guys.
All right, seeing no further questions from council, again, just want to thank you for your report. It was very succinct, and we appreciate all the work that you all do. So thank you. Turn it back over to you, President Bowers.
Thank you, Chair Majors. We will now move to the work of the Community and Economic Development Committee. In Chair Daniel's absence, I will preside over this quarterly report. Hello, we will hear a quarterly report from the Planning Bureau.
Yes, good, good evening, council members. My report tonight will be kind of a follow up on my initial report on July 5th, the first one that kind of covered the first couple of months of the year here. So I'll be looking at this as kind of like a synopsis of quarter three. And I'll basically go over some numbers that I punched up. And actually, I have a few copies here for the council so that you're able to review these and kind of follow along with 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 what I'm where I'm going with these things. So again, the numbers we're kind of discussing here are from July 5th to today, September 20th. And I've kind of broken those out and given yearly totals here. And these are just raw numbers that, like I said, I'll provide a little bit of context. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have specific to these numbers or maybe what they mean in the greater scheme of things. But first there is total work log entries. And again, that's my own kind of personal work log. I log every permit that comes in, building permit, mercantile permit, any inquiry that comes into to me, specifically and not maybe any of my staff. But I do feel, I think, most of the ones that come in through our office. So we've got 446 additional entries just in the last month and a half or two and a half months here, which is, you know, about 50% of what my initial one was through the first six months or so. So it's been pretty steady workload. The building permits, again, we're seeing about half as many as we dealt with through the first six plus months. Mercantile permits, those have been down a little bit recently, and not quite sure why that is. But again, the building permit volume has stayed high. And then our write to no requests, I think, are kind of tailing off a little bit there too. So that's kind of overall zoning and kind of permitting reviews. With regards to zoning and land development, we've had 42 total variants and special exception applications. So you'll see there 12 in the last three months here. That covers July, August, and September. But we haven't really seen the street vacations or land development subdivision plans coming through the office recently. I don't know whether that's just kind of like a summer slowdown thing, which we occasionally get, or whether that's in anticipation of maybe seeing some more of these types of projects coming through in the winter. That's another kind of hotspot for these because people want to go through the permitting process during the winter and then be ready to go in the spring whenever the construction season starts. With regards to the historic preservation work, you've seen that we've got 12 in the last three months. And that's actually kind of a bit of an uptick from our recent, our earlier months in the year here. And I think a lot of that was due to, we've kind of seen work going in with HVAC units, mini splits like that in people's properties. So they've been coming through the process, a lot of window replacements. And that all all kind of relates to like energy efficiency projects that people are looking to do in the summer. And so that's kind of makes sense that we're kind of seeing an uptick in those. In addition, you'll see I had added the bylaws there in our hard reviews. And that's something that the board took up this year. Prior to this, they the bylaws hadn't been updated in since 2010. And so one of the things that Stephen in our Law Bureau noted during one of our meetings was that some of there were some minor inconsistencies between what the bylaw said and what our zoning code said, which actually kind of over supersedes the bylaws. And the zoning code was updated in 2014, but again, the bylaws hadn't been updated since 2010. So we worked to address some of those inconsistencies and also to kind of bring the bylaws current on kind of new technologies and just procedural issues on how the meetings are run and how quorums are established and things of that nature. So the board's been working on those in addition to the normal cases that they hear. We haven't had any Section 106 reviews, and that's because with Frank Grumbine stepping out at the beginning of the year, we just didn't have the capacity to handle those. So we usually were doing those for codes and housing when they were doing demolitions. But now they're using a third party consultant. The 19th Street Armory, so we got a grant to do like kind of an environmental review and a potential reuse analysis of that. And we actually just recently got that final report. I'm looking through it and coordinating on the final steps for tying that grant up with our consultants. And they did look at some potential reuse for that building down on South 19th Street. And one of those was potentially a city facility for maybe like police so they can have additional storage or a vehicle maintenance specifically for them. And maybe even kind of following along with the South Allison Hill Substation, doing substation in different areas of the city so to help them enhance their response time and a better community integration. So that's something that we worked with the Police Bureau on, and, you know, they indicated some interest in doing that. I don't think we're anywhere close to, you know, talking about a capital project where we're redoing that. But it was, you know, one of the one of the kind of template uses that the applicant that the consultants looked at so that they can kind of make some detailed recommendations. And then with our CLG, our Certified Local Government Annual Reporting, that's more of our kind of general historic preservation, maintenance and tracking. And that's something we'll file at the beginning of 2023. With regard to floodplain reviews, we have seen less floodplain reviews, I think, this year than we than are used to in past years. Again, not really sure why that is. That might be a long lead times on getting contractors out and getting a project scheduled. Mainly, they're dealing with things like fences, so it's pretty minor. We haven't had anything this year like demolitions or new construction in the floodplains. So those have been pretty consistent. Our annual CRS certification, again, similar to the CLG program, annual reporting, we're tracking things during the whole year. And then the CRS certification is due about the same time at the beginning of 2023. As far as long term planning, this is where I think some of the challenges we've had in our staffing have come into play. So I guess maybe jumping to the administrative at the bottom. So I guess maybe jumping to the administrative at the bottom, we had somebody we had selected for the Urban Planner One position and they were supposed to be the person that was going to be helping flesh out our comprehensive plan website and developing maps for those for the council's use and talking about the budget and looking at kind of larger-term projects and issues here in the city. However, after they formally accepted, a couple of days later, they backed out. So that was about two months down the drain of just doing background checking and going through interviews. Fortunately, we did have some resumes come in during the time we were doing interviews and background checks. And through those, we were able to identify another candidate who's actually, she'll be starting on Monday. So we'll have our Urban Planner One onboard. And one of the real benefits of her is that she is pretty fluent in Spanish. So she'll be able to help out with a lot of, with some of the applicants that we get in to the Bureau and helping to both explain some of the issues that they might have to deal with in terms of setting up a business or filing a building permit, or just answering general planning and zoning questions to help them out. So that'll be a really big help. Right now, we're using Melissa Ordóñez in the Communications Department, but we'll be able to kind of handle that in-house now, which will, I think, be good. Unfortunately, our Deputy Plan Director is leaving in middle and mid-October, which will put more work on my plate until we're able to fill that position. So we'll kind of be trading positions here in the department for a little bit. I've already reached out to HR about getting the job description up. Hopefully, we can maybe interview on a timeline that gets somebody started by the beginning of next year. And then there'll be some onboarding and training, depending upon their knowledge prior to coming in. But fortunately, we'll only have, he'll be staying through the end of the October meetings. So we'll only, only have November to basically handle things myself. And then we don't have meetings in December. So not the worst thing in the world, but ensuring that we get somebody in that position and hopefully the Historic Preservation Specialist position as well will be paramount. And I think kind of to echo some of the theme that council has heard tonight, you know, I think ensuring that we're making our salaries competitive with the private sector and with other things like, other entities like the state will go a long way to ensuring we have quality staff here in these positions. I think that was a little bit of the challenge with the Urban Planner One position was just, I think, getting, you know, a good pool of qualified candidates that we could interview to bring in. And even during the time between we had selected for, received resumes and selected an interview pool, we lost candidates. And I think that was just people, you know, going to probably jobs with maybe a more competitive salary or just their own personal circumstances dictated that they wanted to not accept the job, like having to move into the area, for example. And so because of those staffing challenges, we're a little behind on those, the comprehensive plan and kind of getting the website and the GIS maps up and running. And then with things like the zoning code update, you know, that's something that I actually just met with finance today to talk about what next 2023 budget is going to look like. And, you know, a lot of that will come down to, you know, I think just further discussions with the administration, see if we can get money in the consulting light item to be able to hire outside consultants to either help set up small area plans, maybe a template, a small area planning process whereby you can take it to individual neighborhoods that could be handled kind of in-house, or doing something a little with it, which is a little bit more of a lift like the zoning code where you're looking at, you know, getting lawyers onboard to have to like a legal analysis of the document that comes out of that process. So that's, that'll involve some additional conversations with the administration where we're going with that. But it is still our intention to, you know, make sure we're enforcing the zoning code. One of the things we talked about when we went through the process was that it was a living document and that it wasn't going to just be sitting on a shelf somewhere. And we really have been looking to do that. We're going to be folding in, you know, the comp plan as a section of our case reports so that we're talking about when there's a project coming through, you know, not just how does this relate to the zoning code, but how does this relate to our comprehensive plan? So we're making sure we're not just following the legal prescriptions of the zoning code, but looking at it from kind of a holistic and a topical aspect of, you know, is this project giving us affordable housing? Is this project contributing to our streetscape, things of that nature? So we are, in the ways that we're able to with our capacity right now, we're looking to, you know, bring, keep the comp plan at the forefront of what we do. We're just going to need a little bit more staff to kind of really flesh that out into something a little bit more public-facing, I think.
Thank you, Director Knight, for your report. I don't have any questions. I always find your reports to be pretty concise and very clear for me. But I will open the floor to my colleagues to see if they have any questions. I'll begin with Councilman Rodriguez. Any questions for Director Knight?
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have any questions. Thank you for being here this evening, Director Knight. There is something I would like to discuss with you offline, though, whenever you get the opportunity.
Sure.
Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. Councilman Matson, any questions?
I guess just one, seems like South Central PA is seeing this trend of rapid growth. Cumberland County, I think, for the second time. And the last two centers is the fastest-growing county in Pennsylvania. Lancaster, I believe, is in the top five and I think often is counties in number nine. So I would imagine we'll start seeing more interest in development here. I know we've seen a fair amount over the years, but if there's an uptick, I guess, are you thinking of, from the staff complement place? Do you think we, even if we fill the, you get to a full complement, do you think, and I know it's hard to predict, we'll have enough staff for any kind of rapid development or interest in development that we may see in the next year or two?
Well, I think that's a good question. And, you know, I'd always like to have more staff. More staff means we're more responsive, we can do more things. And really, it kind of depends upon what that staff would do. We could have a staff person that just goes out and addresses like zoning violations and historic preservation violations and things of that nature. I mean, that's something that occupies a lot of our time. We could have another Planner One, for example, that is maybe going out to attend neighborhood meetings that are going on and reporting back so that we're, you know, hearing what's going on out there in the public, instead of just maybe waiting for them to call in or waiting for them to attend a planning commission meeting. Or we could have, you know, a new position similar to the zoning officer, like a land development officer that might, you know, work a little bit more closely with developers and maybe with like Jason Graves, the business, the LERT administrator, and with Ms. Hill, who's the Economic Development Director, and kind of working over in that little sphere to make sure all of those things are tied together. So I think it really depends upon what that person would do. And there are certainly opportunities, I think, really areas for a person to come in and, you know, address as an issue like that, like are we meeting enough with developers? Or are we hosting enough community meetings between developers and the community? Like, I think another, another staff person onboard could certainly handle something like that.
Then when it comes to the zoning code, are there any thoughts or plans on adapting it or adjusting it, given that we may see this new growing demand?
I think we've got kind of, there's two parts to that answer. There's the short term and the long term. Long-term ideally is that zoning code gets updated sometime over the next couple of years here to reflect the, to become the legal document that enacts the vision that's in the comprehensive plan that council just passed. In the short term, I think there are some things we can do, adding language to the zoning code and clarifying some aspects. I know a couple of years ago, we had one of our staff that was working on fleshing out some differentiation in different types of housing. For example, we have, you know, a couple of proposals that have come before the Planning Bureau to have facilities for kids aged on foster care, doing drug and sober sobriety houses essentially, that maybe like Daystar operates or something like that. Those tend to come up on a fairly regular basis, but our zoning code is really not that specified. And so it kind of all falls under supportive housing. But, you know, there may be, there may be ways for us to do, to really spell that out in the zoning code or addressing things like Airbnbs, having a lot of, you know, a lot more specific language with respect to that. So to your point about the trends we're seeing, like that's a big trend is Airbnbs. And, you know, when people call and ask us, we tell them like, you know, this has to go through the zoning relief process. But if you're looking at Airbnb as an investment property, it's, you know, what that's doing is taking housing units off our inventory. And so it raises the cost of housing for all of our residents, both the ones that exist now and potential future ones. And so, you know, I think having clearer language in the zoning code to talk, to both talk about like what the process is and what we want, I think would be kind of some of those short-term goals that we could do to help address some of these maybe more pressing issues that need some attention prior to before a comprehensive rezoning could be done.
Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ross, any questions?
Good evening. Thank you for coming, Director Knight. I don't have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for your report. Our final committee business this evening will be the Parks, Recreation and Enrichment Committee. I will defer to Chair Ross.
Thank you, President Bowers. And I see that we have Director Baker here from the administration. So come on up. It is your turn. Good evening. How are you today, Director Baker, or this evening? Oh, yeah.
I don't want to get yelled at for not speaking to the mic. Good evening, council.
So you could go ahead and start your quarterly report for us for parks and recreation and facility.
All right. So my report should be fairly brief. One of the biggest things that we would like to bring to light here is that the Parks and Recreation Department was successful in acquiring and receiving over 100 or $1,150,900 in grants for our parks this quarter. We have also been more successful with the facilitation of volunteer work throughout the city just this quarter than all of last year put together. This is largely a reason due to the staff and the goals the staff are trying to set for themselves and as far as the community outreach goes. Some of the larger groups that we've worked with throughout this quarter would be OVR, My Work Program, Youth Day of Caring, Adult Day of Caring, Harrisburg Youth Corp., and then the Faith in Action Group. We also work with numerous smaller entities that, you know, also make a very large impact throughout the city. The Parks and Recreation Department and just the Park Rangers specifically have greatly increased their public outreach this quarter. They've worked by, by doing that, they've used social media, they've used our communications team. That's really worked out well for us. They've also been doing a lot of community outreach by just face-to-face with the public. They've been out in the parks. We do, you know, small giveaways if we kind of, we supply them with, you know, stress relievers and small book bags and a lot of school supplies, you know, you name it. Lots of things that kids would be interested in. So we give those to them. It kind of lets them break the ice with the public and then they can, you know, create those relationships and also spread the mission of the department and let people know of, you know, what summer programs we run, what after-school programs we run. And that's been, you know, pretty successful. We've seen a lot of positive feedback with that. Moving on to our senior tree and our low-income tree program, we have exhausted the funds in both of those areas. With the low-income tree program, we have positively affected 37 addresses. The reason I say that is because the, the addresses sometimes have multiple trees on them that need either pruned or completely removed. And with our senior tree program, we have impacted 35 addresses as well. The City Special Events Department, it has the highest visited webpage of any city entity out there. So that's, that's pretty impressive. We have lots and lots of people, both internally but especially externally, that are not from the area, visit the webpage on a regular basis. And I mean, that's something that we're proud of, that we, you know, manage the page and have that, you know, that much following in the, you know, social media world. All of the donorship amounts for the city events across the board for this quarter and so far this year have been increased this year compared to any other year previously. So there's another milestone that we've hit with that department that, you know, we're very proud of. The Facilities Department, some of the major projects that we are currently working on would be the Public Safety Building. We have done our kickoff meeting for the HVAC replacement and all the mechanical equipment to support that. So that's going to be a long process, but that is actually, you know, up and running. That is a huge milestone for us in that building. The Aaron Johnson Building, the HVAC project there is well on its way. And we do expect to see that finalized before winter. The Reservoir Park Brownstone Building HVAC project is almost complete. The MLK PSB flooring project, so it's in both buildings. We have sent all the bids out. We've received them back and we just need to grade everything and choose a winner for the bids to start that project. And the Reservoir Park Mansion bids are due this week. So we should be hopefully assigning, you know, a winner to that and starting that project in the near future. The Facilities Department is working closely with the Public Works Department to both administer and implement all of their illegal dumping cameras. We are, you know, all over the place helping or assisting all the different departments that we can. The Facilities Department, Parks Maintenance Department are working with Central Penn College. And we are doing, you know, cleanups and, you know, doing small improvements to Skyline Field. Central Penn College is going to try and adopt Skyline Field as their, you know, their main field of use for their students. They just purchased a scoreboard for us and we will be installing a brand-new scoreboard at that field shortly here. Currently, we have eight open positions within the departments. And it's, you know, it's basically the same thing as what we've talked about throughout the night when it comes to hiring or retaining staff.
Thank you. And that concludes your report?
Yes, it does.
You actually answered one of my questions that I had was the elderly or senior tree program. So I saw you said you impacted 37 homes. What was your goal for this year?
So with the tree removal, it, it has so many matrix involved in calculating it. You know, we could take a tree down or prune a tree and it could be a minimal cost. Or there could be a giant tree with a lot of technicality to it, which would take a huge chunk of the budget. So it's, we don't even calculate. We just basically shoot for the stars, you know, as much as we can get to impact as many people as possible.
Okay, has it been, is 37 trees more than you did last year or the years prior? Is that going down?
So the, the total number, if my memory serves, because we did 37 low-income addresses and 35 senior tree or senior, seniors' addresses, trees. So most likely, that's probably around, and again, I can get these numbers, it's just a much easier way to calculate to do the addresses. I'm assuming, let's say, 50-some trees possibly affected in both categories. So roughly 100. And as I said, I can get you the exact number. Just take some calculation on that part. But that's on average, give or take, what we did previous years. Now, last year was an exception because last year was an exception because we did reallocate, and we did receive another $150,000 mid-year, which we easily spent and really affected a lot more. But with our average funding, this is what we typically see.
Okay, thank you. And for the ECA budget, do you know if, you could email me that, just, or email all of us, just us to know what the funds are in that budget right now? Have they all been used with the summer program? I just, you know, wanted to know what the current funds were.
For the?
I think it's that.
Host municipal fee?
No, it's the budget, I don't know, maybe not the budget's the right name, but I believe it, I believe it is, but it dealt with the, the program in the summertime where the kids were cleaning up. I think the trash pickup.
That'd be the host municipal fee. And I can send you the information for that. So we do currently use that because we do lots of cleanups and volunteer events as well. So I can send you those numbers and what we've used out of there and what's still left in that area, too.
Yes, please. Thank you. And the Living Memorial Project in Reservoir Park, is that still on schedule? Well, I know trees are supposed to be taken down on September 19th, so that was yesterday. So where are we at with, with that project?
So that project is in the works. I actually met with the group that's working on that, I think it was two days ago, and we kind of reassessed everything. As I stated before, we are, you know, looking for eight staff members. So we are, as, you know, I hate to sound like a broken record, but it's just, we are so understaffed right now. We are trying to maintain the life safety issues in the playgrounds and, you know, pick up the, the bulk trash and keep the highest grass cut in the largest areas. We are not maintaining everything that we'd like to, obviously. So this is one of those things that we had to prioritize. And as soon as we get the ability to, we will start working on this. But during that meeting, I did talk to the group and see if they could start doing like lower level of brush and invasive removals, which they were totally open to. If they're successful in doing that, then I believe that we can spend, you know, a quarter of the time to do the same exact amount of work as far as removing the, the trees that need to be taken down in that area.
Okay, thank you. That's, oh, one last question with the complement. What is the biggest issue with not, not meeting as many workers as you need? Is it pay? Is it not finding applicants?
So we kind of have a diverse complement as far as the, the skill level, and it's, it's across the board. Sometimes it's, you know, everything's connected to everything. So we could have more skilled applicants if we had a higher pay, but we can also, you know, have, it's, yeah, it's, like I said, it's the same as everyone else. It's just, we're seeing it everywhere. We're just trying to stay competitive, but not break the bank at the same time.
Okay, thank you. That's it for my questions. I'm gonna open it up to my fellow council members, and I'll start here with Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Chair Ross. I don't have any questions, but I do want to give hats off to the department for all the great work this summer with the youth supplying the jobs and, you know, making sure they stayed off the streets and stayed busy. I know quite a few of those youngsters that really took pride in going to work every day and even saying, "I work for the city of Harrisburg." Like, it just was cool to hear a lot of them say that. So thank you guys for all your due diligence with that. But I have, my questions were pertaining to the complement, and you answered that. So thank you. Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez. And President Bowers, do you have any question?
I do. Thank you. I just wanted to follow up on the special events, the highest visited webpage or site information. I just wondered if all of that interest had garnered an influx in attendance at our major events that we held over the summer, and if there was any new participation from local vendors, either food vendors or other artists?
So, yeah, we definitely have local vendors whenever we do the events because we have such a massive amount of vendors. It's, they're, they're involved in that. One thing we did talk about internally for Capona is, and, and not that we didn't do this, but to continue with it, is local performers, you know, in the stages. And that's something that we're going to see if we can't do even more of than we currently do. Because, you know, a lot of the local talent we have here is really impressive. So, you know, it's, it's something we want to, to keep striving towards doing. As far as the, the website, you know, visiting, I think a lot of that has to do with just the, the name that we're making for ourselves and, and, you know, a lot of interest in people that are not from the area, so they don't know where to go other than the website. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Bowers. Councilman Mattson?
No questions for me. Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Well, thank you, Director Baker, for your report and answering our questions. And that is it for the Parks and Recre- Excuse me, I cannot talk, it must be late. Parks and Recreation and Enrichment Committee and Facilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Our committee business has concluded, but I would like to take an opportunity to open the floor for public comment. Is there anyone to my far right that would like to offer a public comment? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone in the middle section? Okay. So just a reminder for you, you'll be coming to this mic here, and if you could please state your name and your address. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, you can share the vicinity in which you live, and you'll have two minutes to share your comments. Thank you.
I'm Frederick Hudsonker. I live in downtown Harrisburg. I understand that there is a shortage of personnel, like electricians, plumbers, et cetera, and that is causing businesses and residents to not be able to get repairs done that they need. For example, one business that I frequently patronize, their air conditioning went out of order almost a month ago, and they want to install mini-split air conditioning units, but they can, but I understand that a licensed electrician needs to do it. So it's, I'd call upon the city to kind of find a solution, such as, but not, not limited to allowing a, a service person licensed by a different jurisdiction to perform the work. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments. Is there anyone else in the middle section? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone to my left? Seeing and hearing no one, the time is 8:28 PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second, thank.
We stand adjourned. Thank you.